I'd like to call the September 2nd, 2021 Board Meeting to Order. Can we do the roll?
Mr. Whitcliff?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Velter?
Here.
Mr. Geary?
Here.
All right, will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, real quick, we're going to have a statement from Dr. McMullin before we do our recognitions and awards.
Thank you, good evening. Thank you for attending tonight's Olathe Public Schools Board of Education meeting. We're pleased to have so many new faces joining our meetings, both in person and online, to support our students and their learning. Before we begin our recognitions, staff presentations, and community public comments, we feel it is important that we review the importance and guidelines of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. For those community members in attendance who have signed up for public comments, please come to the podium when the Board President calls your name. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, yelling, foul language, props, visuals, and addressing the audience are not permitted. In addition, per Board of Education policy, public comments forum may not be used for political promotion or gain. Failure to adhere to these guidelines will result in the loss of future opportunities to participate in public comments. After public comments have concluded, the remainder of the meeting is designated for the Board to work with the superintendent and staff to conduct the work as outlined in the agenda. Patrons who stay for the remainder of the meeting after public comments do so in an observatory role. Those who disrupt the meeting will be asked to leave and will lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Thank you again for attending, and we'll now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. McMullin. And now, I think I speak for the entire Board that we are very excited to have this section back. We have a recognitions and awards.
Thank you very much. I too am thrilled that we have our, after a break from recognitions, that we are able to honor two staff members tonight. So, we are going to begin our recognitions with Oregon Trail math teacher Carly Bowden. Carly, if you could come forward, along with Principal Justin Howe, and Assistant Superintendent for Middle Schools, Dr. Sarah Guerrero. Carly was named a 2021 Lowell Milken Center Fellow. The Lowell Milken Center, brunt of heroes in Fort Scott, Kansas, is an international education nonprofit that awards LMC fellowship based on merit to educators who have distinguished themselves in teaching respect and understanding through project-based learning or who have the potential for this distinction. The center selects exemplary teachers from across America and around the world, drawn from a variety of disciplines, to collaborate on projects that discover, develop, and communicate the stories of unsung heroes of history. Congratulations to you, Carly. And we always like to recognize the family of our honorees, and we have them right here. Congratulations again. Next, we'd like to recognize Becky Keely, physical education teacher at Meadow Lane Elementary. Becky, if you could come forward, along with Principal Ryan Lowe, and Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools, Tim Briggs. Becky was named the 2021 Physical Education Teacher of the Year by the Kansas Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. She was selected as an award recipient for using a comprehensive and diverse physical education program, planning and implementing innovative and diverse experiences to meet the needs of all students, utilizing student assessment as an essential component of the physical education program, and advocating for the profession of physical education. She will be honored at the 2021 K-Ford, I'm practicing, it's K-Ford, K-Ford Convention Award Celebration later this fall. And on another note, I want to say that, under her leadership at Meadow Lane, the school received the 2020 Kansas Association of Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Model School Gold Award, which is a really, really big deal, so congratulations to you, Becky. And Becky, you also have family and dear friend here as well, so I love you all, and I love you as well. Congratulations. And that concludes our recognitions tonight.
Thank you. All right, and now we will go into the Information Presentation Section 3.02, Diversity and Engagement Presentation.
Good evening. First of all, thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to share our presentation tonight. This evening, we were going to be sharing just an overview of our introduction to our diversity and engagement team, an overview of our 2020-21 key initiatives, and then, of course, our 2021-22 Comprehensive Plan. Last July, Mr. Harris and Ms. Arasso presented the vision for the 2020-21 school year. In May, we were tasked with the development of a comprehensive plan. We want to thank you for recognizing the importance of our work and for your dedication and commitment to understanding and appreciating the importance of fostering and celebrating a diverse community within our schools, because we know that when we do that, not only does our team thrive, our students will thrive, so thank you for that. Knowing that we have a board that is truly committed to this work will help ensure that we carry out and execute our plan with fidelity. We want to assure you that we stand behind our mission statement, which is posted there for you, and that we are going to continue, as a department and as a district, to promote a diverse, equitable, and inclusive environment for all our students, for all our staff, and for our community stakeholders, so that everyone feels welcomed, and, again, putting in a district that our students will thrive, because that's what's most important here, and it doesn't happen without your support and your commitment. It starts from the top, so thank you for that. Thanks to the support and commitment that we've been able to develop our, I'm going to get used to this little clicker here, I asked for it, and then now I've got to remember to use it, right? So, sorry, Ron. He says, "Dr. G is always asking for something," and then she forgets about it. But we know that, last month, you heard an outstanding presentation from Mr. Reeves, and we know that about adding our diversity to our comprehensive or our strategic plan. We also know that it's important to understand that in order for our work to be impactful, to be meaningful, it needs to be strategically planned, and it cannot be rushed. That is something that we have committed ourselves to, and as we continue to work through our comprehensive plan, we will continue to stress. With our work here, we all know that when we start working on our comprehensive plan, we start to realize and start asking, "We need training in this, we need training in that." But it can't happen all at once, and we have to be very strategic, and it has to fit the needs of our district and the needs of what our staff and students have for us. As we continue our work, we look at our strategic plan that Mr. Reeves presented to you. That's an example of our commitment by embedding diversity into our strategic plan. But as we continue to learn more from our professional learning, from input from our surveys, from our staff professional learning, we will make sure that we make some adjustments, or we might have to add some additional sub-goals to our strategic plan. I just want to make sure that we point that out, because even though it's been presented, starting with this is not an end-all. We are going to have to make adjustments as we move on. So, our work around diversity began several years back, just knowing that. In 2020, we formally established the Department of Diversity and Engagement, and soon after that, we began assembling our amazing team. And so, I wanted to share with you the team that we've put together in the last year and a half. First one down the middle is Mr. Eric Arasso, who is our Executive Director for our Diversity and Engagement Department. And Eric is standing here, and I think we all know Eric. Eric has been with our district for 18 years. Yeah, that's a lot. We call him our founding father of diversity and engagement, because truly, he was a one-man team 16 years ago, and started slowly but gradually, starting the work of our diversity. And so, Eric is a key person to our department. And then, in 2020, we had Mr. Marquis Harris, who is now our Assistant Director, join our team. Now, Marquis, I'm going to read this, because I want to make sure I don't miss something about Marquis. But Marquis is an advocate for educational equity, and we were lucky enough to steal him from the college level. He's working, he's been working to support first-generation and underrepresented students, especially to ensure their success. And if I'm correct, I think Marquis is also an author? Yes, he is also an author, so again, we are very fortunate to have both Eric and Marquis leading our work. Then we have, this year, we added Liliana Gallegos Avila. She is the Administrative Assistant, because as we continue our work, we want to make sure that we have support for Eric and Marquis, and just building that department. Liliana's been an Olathe employee for several years, taking on various roles in the district. In the middle, who is actually here tonight, Jean Cantero. And Jean is our Student and Family Support Specialist. He will be working closely with our students. But what I want to point out about Jean that's really important is that he is an Olathe product. Jean is a graduate of Olathe South, and we are very excited to have him. He's been an outstanding addition, and we're, we told him we're going to clone Eric to him, and then he's going to take it and run from there. But he's, we're excited to get him to work, and the fact that, talk about grow your own, that's an example right there. And then, of course, we have Samantha Landa. We all know Samantha. She's our Language Management Specialist, and she works closely with our interpreters, and in addition, works closely with our Communications Department and does all the translation for our families and Spanish-speaking families. Geraldo Jimenez is a migrant specialist, Nicholas Janner, migrant eight. Both, well, Geraldo is AKA G, it's just short G. So, and it's hard, because you have Jean and G, but G and Nicholas are both Olathe grads as well. Both of us, both of them graduating from Olathe North. Again, that's really important, because they know our community, they know our students, they know our schools, and so, being able to have them join our team is, has been another wonderful addition. And then, we have Jane Tayani, who's a migrant data specialist. As a department, we've been working really hard this year. We've been working hard for a while, but this year specifically, really being very intentional and taking pride in what we do, because, again, our commitment to this work is very important. Our students need this, the population that we serve is so important, but more importantly, that's what makes Olathe special. And we say that, because we all say, "We're here because we love Olathe, we're here because we want students to feel the way we feel. This is a place where we feel like we belong, this is family, and that's important in order for our kids to thrive." So, as our department, what are we, what do we stand for? What do we do? What's our aim? And our aim is to support, to educate, and advocate. As a department, the key areas of focus that we're, that all our work revolves around is student engagement, employee engagement, and community engagement. Those are the three driving forces that are going to drive our work, and we're going to make sure that whatever we work on is going to be tied to one of those key areas. Again, on top of the fact that we've heard a lot of, "What does your department work on? What will be your focus?" Our focus, obviously, is diversity, equity, and inclusion. Liliana, this is the part that, I appreciate you asking about this last, last month, because in order for us to do our work, we have to make sure that there's a clear understanding of what diversity, equity, and inclusion means. I think, right now, we're at a place where there's a lot of misinterpretation of what it means. And so, in order for us to move it forward as a district and as a community, is we need to understand what these are so that we have that common language. It's very, very important, and what those words mean for Olathe. And so, Marquis is going to take us through each one of them, so that we have a clear understanding, have that common language. Whoever asks, "What does this mean?", because there is a difference, there is a clear understanding is going to help move the work, and so that we can all be supportive with this.
Again, thank you all for the opportunity to be before you again. It's good to see you, good to see faces. I would just want to be able to ground ourselves in the work as we continue to establish it within our system, as we communicate with our students, with our families, as well as our district staff. So, understanding foundationally, as we use these terms, understanding what it means for us and how it guides the lens. So, the first being diversity, and what you see on the screen before you, all the ways that we are similar and different, that impact our interactions and performance with one another. But most importantly, when we think about diversity, too often, we think about it in the race-culture binary. Those are the only two things that it compromises, but as you can see on that list, there's so much more that comes with that, when we think about what diversity means here in the Olathe School District. And so, I want to show, show you really quickly, a quick graph, the KSDE District Report Card from 2020, just to show the student demographic, again, that's represented here in Olathe Public Schools, with 66% being white, 17.1% being representative of the Hispanic population, 7.3 African-American, and 9.6 representative of our Asian-Pacific Islanders, those that identify as mixed-race and our Native American population here in the district. And I think an important thing to note is that we have 86 different languages that are spoken in our district. I think it's easy to think, "Oh, this is, no, we have 86 different languages that are spoken in our district, and that's what our department helps support with our interpreters, with Spanish being number two and Amharic being number three." And so, I think as we think about diversity within our district, this is what we talk about in understanding the unique needs that exist within our district. Second piece, understanding what equity means, is the guarantee of fair treatment, access, opportunity, and advancement for all. How can we remove the barriers that exist for our students and our families? This isn't a new term in education. This is something we've been doing since the start. And I have a graph here, just a quick image that, that was circulating on social media from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, that I think is a very clear distinction between the term equality and equity. So, if you're looking at the top, equality says, "I'm giving everybody the exact same thing." Equity says, "I'm looking at the unique needs of the individuals that are presented, and I'm, and I'm basing that, that need on that being able to provide." In this, in this sense, a mode of transportation, and something as simple as a bike. But when we think about in our classroom, we think about differentiated instruction. We think about the accommodations that we do. We think about all the different needs, being able to provide both English and Spanish translations for our families. That's equity in action when we think about this work, and so, that's an important foundation as we think about this work, and as we continue to communicate that for our team. Lastly, inclusion, is about authentically bringing traditionally excluded individuals and/or groups into processes, activities, and decision-making. Again, it's not a new concept within our system. It's something we do within our Student Advisory Council. Something new last year, knowing that, hey, we needed a, we needed a, an accountability system for professional learning. How do we come together to create a checklist, bringing various departments together to talk about how we create fidelity across the system? That's what inclusion means, making sure that we bring the right, right people to the table to be able to enact decisions that impact our system as a whole. And so, as we, as we forecast, the last time we had the opportunity to be before you, we had a, we, we had a busy past year, as you, as you would imagine, in the 2020-2021 school year, but just want to highlight just a few things for you. One being that we had the successful launch of the Diversity and Engagement Advisory Council. An important thing here is that this council is representative of every level throughout our district, our community partners, business partners, we have students, our high school students represented, we have certified staff, we have parents, we have administrators, we have board members that are represented. To be a part, and most importantly, I think, what's, what to keep in mind here is, when we talk about inclusion, bringing the right people to the table, this group is that voice. This group represents so many of those individuals that are passionate about pushing this work forward, and then it also serves as an opportunity to keep us accountable as a department, because we know we can't do this work alone in a 30,000-student system. We know that's important. And so, that's what we, so that's what we know is important as we continue forward. Another key piece, as we look at how we continue to do this work, one of the things, last year, we had the opportunity to work with Human Resources, and one of the big pieces here is that we understood, based on the need, based on the feedback from our system, and also even from our students, that as we look around our system and we look at our educators, we know that it doesn't quite reflect that of our student demographic. And so, part of that is being strategic in how we market, being strategic in how we work with various university partners that we had listed here, and for the sake of time, I'm not going to read each and every one, but one of the things I do want to highlight is that Dr. Guerrero alluded to something about growing our own. And I know Dr. Addison is here in the crowd somewhere over there, that, and we've been working intently with, along with Dr. Donovan out of HR, and a number of others, to develop how we continue to promote this pathway. And so, whenever we have that fully fleshed out, we'll bring a more comprehensive presentation on it, but I do want to give you a quick overview of what this represents. We understand that oftentimes, we're trying to search in the same bank as every other district from the colleges of education, of, "Who are these teachers? How can we get great teachers?" And oftentimes, they're sitting in our classrooms. And because they're sitting in our classrooms, we need to think of strategic ways, and often in our hallways, they're, they're working as parent educators. So, these are multiple different pathways that we're looking at to be able to advance this objective, to make sure, hey, we're bringing the best, because they are the best, because they come from the best, that being the district. And so, multiple different pathways that we have listed here, but most importantly, I think it's, it's important for us to recognize, again, that it's a strategic, it's an intentional approach to the work, that we can't take for granted, but again, being able to look within in, in what we have here in the district already. Another key piece that actually came from the work within the Diversity and Engagement Advisory Council was the establishment of affinity groups. And I want to be able to provide a bit of clarity on what affinity groups are, their purpose, their function. So, generally speaking, there, these groups are designed for underrepresented populations. For example, here, within Olathe African-American community, the LGBTQ+, the Hispanic population, Muslim, who share common interest backgrounds and experience to come together in a place for networking, support, and resources for one another. And an important note here, as we think about the why, is they help foster a culture of belonging, a foster a culture of retention, leadership development for the members, but also giving them a space to convene and interact. And it's very similar to the work that we do with our student clubs. We have our Black Student Unions. We have our Diversity Student Councils. We have our Hispanic Leadership Club. We have all these different various clubs that represent these specific groups, and the same thing, being able to provide a space for them to feel like they belong. And within these groups, as we think about the function, very similar, similar at the corporate level of an employee resource group. So, if you're looking for something synonymous, this would be the equivalent of that within our system. And currently, right now, we have three that were launched in the, in the spring semester. The Black Educators Affinity Group, our Hispanic Educators, Latino Educators Affinity Group, and our LGBTQ+ Educator Affinity Group. And the only thing that I, that we want to mention here is, it's, it's an important space to just be in there, just to listen, to feel, hey, that the district took a step to say they're serious about creating a space where, if we're talking about recruiting and making sure that we, we bring the best, we got to make sure that we create the culture that says, "Hey, you belong here, and here's a space for you to do it." And so, with that, it's a good segue to talk about our student engagement, so I'm actually going to call up Mr. Eric Arasso to, to bring us to this next piece.
Hello, everyone. Always hard to speak after Marquis, because he's such a good speaker. All right, well, I'm going to talk to you guys a little bit about our student engagement. So, I've talked to you guys about the Lowrider Bike Club, and so, just to recap, each kid that, that joins the club, and any kid in our district can join the club, will get a bike frame, a 1960s Schwinn Stingray type of frame, and then they can customize it through high school. And then, once they graduate, they get to take that bike home. But we also get bikes that are donated from the community, from the police department. The bikes that don't get picked up in the street, they give them to us. We refurbish them and then give them back to the community, and we average about five, six bikes a week that we get to give back to the community, and not just in Johnson County, but also Wyandotte County as well. And that's, that's, that's pretty cool. It's really neat, but the most important part is, our graduation rate is still at 100%, and most of our kids are in college or trade school. And we actually have our very first student that is applying to the police department, so it's just really neat. But we got noticed. People noticed what we were doing, and it's, it's pretty cool. So, we also got the opportunity to work with the police department and build a Lowrider police car. So, we got to customize a police car, along with OATC students in the auto collision program. It took us three years to do it, but we got it done, and it looks really good. And we noticed that Albuquerque, New Mexico, also had a police vehicle that they had customized in the same way. So, we reached out to them and just said, "Hey, it looks like we're doing kind of the same stuff, you know, we just want to talk to you guys." And it turns out that they are, they built the vehicle so that they could reach the community. Our vehicle was built by the community, and so, it was like, "Hey, let's get together and talk." And so, as we kept talking and meeting weekly, we decided that we were going to put together a National Community Policing Forum, and it was the first of its kind. And so, we got to go to Albuquerque, New Mexico, and talk to California, New Mexico, and Arizona about our program. And people loved it, and it looks like we're going to be implementing the programs in other states. So, pretty soon, you'll see bike club chapters in other states and spots in the other states. And we actually have a bike club chapter starting up in October in Kansas City, Kansas. So, we'll be seeing that through the PALS, which is Police Athletically, coming up here pretty soon. So, that was, that was pretty cool. And then, I'm going to talk to you guys, another program that we created that we hadn't from the last time that we spoke, which is the SPOT. The name just means, you know, it's the spot, it's a place to be, right? And so, this comes as a result of, you know, years of me working in the community, and, and really just, you know, I don't think it's fair to tell a kid, "Don't do this, don't do that." Well, like, "What do you want me to do? I don't know, just don't do that, right?" It's just not fair. And there really isn't anywhere free in our community for kids to just go and have fun and hang out. So, we, I, I always wanted to have a building, and people used to call me crazy for just, like, asking for a building, but every meeting I would go to, anywhere I could be, like, if somebody could just give me a building, we can make something work. We were super blessed. The Department of Corrections said, "Hey, we have a building. If you want to check it out, let's make it happen." I think we're in the middle of, like, the pandemic, and I said, "Let's make it happen." We met, we created the, the documentation to get it going, and we were in. And then, we decided that we were going to create this as a partnership, because we want the community to be involved. You know, it is important to build bridges, but it's important to build bridges together, right? When you, when somebody builds a bridge and says, "Come on through," sometimes you go, "I'm not sure if it's sturdy," right? But if you build it together, you know that that is made correctly, and you trust it, and you want to get it done. So, it is important to have the buy-in of everybody. We needed to build this bridge together. So, we reached out to Johnson County Department of Corrections, of course, us, the, the Olathe Public Schools, the Olathe Library, which is amazing. We actually have a library inside this facility where kids can take books and they never have to bring them back, so there's no late fees. Johnson County Mental Health, which of course is amazing, the Olathe Police Department. Guys, one neat thing about this is, we have police officers that come in, they hang out with the kids, they play pool, ping pong, they try to play basketball, they get beat all the time. But it's just really neat, because I could tell you, Vanessa, where we were at, I was actually in the meeting with Albuquerque, and I had the video on, and I showed them all these police officers playing with kids, and they're like, "Did you stage that?" And I'm like, "No, it's really happening," so that's pretty cool. And then, of course, the Fire Department, and most recently, the DEA. So, we're going to, not only are they backing us up financially, but they're going to be sending officers, or special agents, as they call them, to come out and hang out with the kids. And this just really creates a network for our kids and introduces them to different career paths, and just a lot of awesome mentors that come in. So, this program is for middle school and high school kids, so sixth to 12th grade. It is completely free. We also feed them at the SPOT, which is pretty cool, and they also get to earn what's called SPOT bucks, which is fake money that they get. And they also get to earn what's called SPOT bucks, which is fake money that they get to earn. And then they could spend it at the store. So not only do they get, you know, whatever, we're, we're feeding them that day, but they can also buy some swag from Olathe North or South or East or different things that come in from the community. So within the facility, we have a homework spot. So we have computers in there, we have mentors in there so that kids can come in, they can do their homework. We also have a room where we have a ping pong table, a pool table, a couple of arcade games, old style arcade games. We have like Pac-Man and things like that. So most of the adults are actually playing those. Then we also have Maker Space, we have a recording studio, we have an outdoor area for basketball and all that kind of neat stuff. We have a video game room. So there's a lot of stuff to do. We've actually been featured on 41 Action News, CNBC 9, and actually Fox as well. So we hope that we continue to get, you know, the word out about the awesome things that are happening in Olathe. But really, again, this is just really neat and I encourage anybody that wants to volunteer, they can contact Gene and he will put you on the list because we love having volunteers from the community just come out and hang out with the kids. Another neat program that we started is Olathe Leadership Council. So Olathe Leadership Council was created to really become kind of like an umbrella club. So throughout the years that I've been working in the community, working with students, there's all these great opportunities that come about. And most of the time, you know, I was able to, to, to work with those opportunities with the clubs that I sponsored. But I always wanted to make sure that all the kids, all the different clubs knew about the opportunities that existed. So Olathe Leadership Council is kind of the umbrella club that says, okay, whatever information that we get, we're going to shoot down to all the other clubs. So we get to meet, we have 30 plus clubs represented. We meet once a month, Gene is going to overtake that, that group and just share opportunities. For example, we have been working with KC Bisfest, which is the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Every year puts together a scholarship competition where kids get four days to create a business plan. Every kid that participates in that program is eligible for full ride scholarships. And then on top of that, if they win top six, they also get some cash prizes for college. So that is one of the opportunities that we're going to get to share with everybody and say, hey, everybody, here are the applications, let's fill them out, this is happening soon, let's get you going. So that's, that's a really neat initiative that, that's happening again, to make sure that everybody has that opportunity to know about what's going on in our clubs. So we're going to shift gears a little bit. We shared what we did last year and now we're going to discuss our comprehensive plan moving So as part of Phase One, one of our goals is to conduct the quantitative and qualitative data assessment of diversity, equity, and inclusion trends throughout the equity audit. To accomplish this, we have assembled a team of district leaders to review and explore the best options to partner with outside organizations. Additionally, our second goal will be to design a three-year diversity, equity, and inclusion plan for district-wide professional learning and implementation supports for an equity and driven culture. So I'm going to go ahead and let Marquis come back up here because he's such a great speaker to walk you through that.
So Promise, we're, we're right about at the end. And so to, to that point, want to just add really quickly from the big picture about the professional learning opportunities for our staff. One of the things that we've already launched into is just understanding educational equity in Olathe Public Schools. So really given very similar foundation that we've given to you all already, what about our work, the importance, the things we've done in the past and the ways in which we can help impact the classrooms to help make sure that our students feel a place that they can belong and continue to push forward. Additionally, one of the new things that we had the opportunity to do is partner with Cornerstone Learning to deliver e-learning modules. So this is a way that we're able to have more fidelity and attracting system when it comes to this work, I mean, making sure everybody's getting the same thing. And part of that, as we're looking at, okay, what do those modules consist of? What do those things look like? A lot of that was, has been deemed upon the surveys that we get back from our staff based on, hey, this is the learning that we need, this is the learning that we request. And so as we, as we look onto this coming month, well, this month actually, oh, in September 24th, as we go through Part One, Part Two, and Part Three throughout the entire school year, some of the ones that kept coming back up was, how do we confront when an individual, you know, microaggresses against another individual? How do we, how do we intervene as a bystander on certain instances? What are microaggressions and how do they come about whenever we're actually teaching or different things like that? So part of, part of this work is very prescriptive in a sense of, hey, we're not just throwing something and hoping it sticks. It's very much responsive to the needs that our staff has already expressed and continues to express as we continue forward. So as we look through the next three, the next three training opportunities, those are going to be what those entail and very much also centered on how we take that work and apply it directly within the classroom. So we had the opportunity to do that live via YouTube and broadcast that live across the district. So that is what we'll, we'll continue to do as we, as we push forward. And secondly, another piece of this, not only do we understand the importance at our staff level, working with our teachers, our parents, we know how important it is for our administrators to be on the same page. Again, when we think about carrying out the vision and carrying out this work with fidelity, we know that our leaders need support. We know that our leaders need a little extra understanding behind this work. And so that's what we're also did when we had the opportunity to pitch the same thing about educational equity and what that looks like. And their buildings, how do you champion that work to make sure our families feel that they belong? How do we make sure our students, how do we address the unique needs of each building? But also looking at how we continue to carry that work forward. And so we'll be doing that as we get into the next two PD professional development days for our team. And so with that, one new thing that we launched this year is the Equity Hotline. And this is, this is an important note because last year, all we had was our diversity email. And a lot of people didn't know about it. A lot of people don't email. As you can see, they like to make phone calls. And so what we provided was an opportunity for individuals to be able to have a place to call in to report. If there's something that they may not have support in a building, they may not have a relationship with anybody to be able to express some of these things. And so what this process looks like very simply is that a person makes a call, it goes directly to a message bank. Our, our team in our department receives it, we vet it, understand what's the need, they have the opportunity to leave their name and a contact number and a follow-up and we're able to follow up accordingly. So if it's a student concern, if it's an employee concern, follow up with the administrator and then also necessarily wherever our necessary personnel, whether it be in human resources or with our senior leadership here, here in the district. So just a little bit about that and just understanding, you know, just providing another avenue and another space for access to be more accessible for our students and our families and our staff here in the district. And so as we close, I'll bring back up Dr. Guerrero to close this.
An additional piece that I want to add to the Equity Hotline, and it's very important that we understand this, is that our Equity Hotline was not designed as a gotcha. I think that's very important because what it is, is an avenue to be able to, you know, there may be something, I just need somebody to talk to. I need someone to process something, help me understand, am I reading this a certain way? What am I reading into? It may be that they may not have someone that they don't feel comfortable with talking about it, they just want to put it, share it. And then in turn, we would be able to work with our administrative team to make sure that we're able to provide that support. Can you check into this for us? So I think that's really important to stress because we don't, that's not our, that's not our role here. That's not our, that's not the work that we want to be put out there is that, oh, well, now we're out there trying to get somebody in trouble. If we are intentional, if we put our work into this the way we're supposed to, we're here to educate, we're here to advocate, and we're here to support. That's really important because a lot of times when we're trying to move this work forward, it's a lack of understanding. And in order for us to move forward, not only as a system, but as a community, we have to be able to educate and understand each other. And so that's what this is for. And I want to make sure that we put that there so it's not, and this is for our students and our staff members. As we move forward for Phase Two, which is next year, you know, we, we went in with this plan of saying, hey, we want to, we're going to go out there and we're just going to throw out a Phase Three. But what we learned from putting together this comprehensive plan is that best practice shows that for our work to be impactful, it should be done strategically and it have to make sure that it's delivered over an extended period of time. You heard Marquis talk about the needs, how we're going to respond to the needs of our staff, how we're going to respond to the needs of our administrators. We started thinking, if we put, give you a three-year plan, we're just putting something in paper and it's got to be what our district needs. It's got to fit our needs and it's got to fit and align with our vision. And so that's why when we talk about 2022, 23 school year, we're going to look at trends analysis. And this is going to be based on professional learning surveys that we get back from our staff. Where it's also going to be work with the Diversity Engagement Advisory Council, which includes our students, employees, and community engagement. And as we move forward to start working to put together our equity audit, we're going to look at trends from that as well. And then we're going to base our focus moving forward for Phase Two from there. You know, before our questions, I think one of the things that I appreciate about Dr. Jaeger is that he always says, you got to speak from your heart all the time or you got to tell a story. And I'm standing here and I'm listening to Eric and Marquis and I'm thinking, how awesome is this work? And I'm telling you this, and I don't know why I'm getting emotional, but this is so important. And the fact that you believe in it, the fact that our community believes in it, just, it just really is important because in story be told, truth be told, we were nervous as heck to come present in front of you today. We truly were. And it was, and then we started thinking, why are we nervous? Why? Because the work is that important and we want it to mean something and we want the message to be sent out, what our work represents. And we don't want it to be misunderstood at all. We want people to understand why it's important, what these definitions mean, and not mix them with any other things that are going on in our world. That's what, why it was important. And more importantly, it was important because we love our district. We could be anywhere we want to be, but we choose Olathe for a reason. You know, telling our story, speaking from my heart, I'm a person of color, but I stand here before you and I'm able to do what I do because this district has made me feel like I could be me, no matter what. I will never speak like Dr. Jaeger, he's amazing, you know, Marquis.
A little softer on the compliments tonight.
Yeah, that's what we always say, as long as Dr. Jaeger doesn't go before us, we're okay. But you know, you heard Eric today talk about, Marquis is a great speaker. He is, we all know that. But Eric brings something special. And so if we feel this way as adults, that's what we want for our students. That's what we should all want for our students because when we, when they know that they feel a part of something, the way we do, they're going to thrive. We're able to stand here before you today because you believe in the work, because you believe in us and you allow us to be us. And so with that, I'm just going to say thank you and any questions?
So before we go to questions real quick, a couple of things I might like to add just real quick. Thank you, Dr. G, for speaking from your heart and telling a story tonight. I don't remember when I gave you that advice, but I'm glad you listened. I'm just kidding. You know, one of the things that I think is important for us all to recognize as, as we go through this work and, you know, we continue to build out a comprehensive plan that really gets to the things that are important to our community and to our school district, is that we also recognize there's things that we're doing really well. So sometimes when you hear words like audit, you know, we think, okay, that's like an IRS audit and they're coming in to determine where I wasn't accurate on my taxes or something like that. But that's not the case with this. So one of the things I know we'll discover as we go through this process and, you know, as, as they said, they've, they've begun this work, there are going to be places where we're doing really well as a district. And I think a great example of that is the Low Rider Bike Club that Eric rightly talked so proudly of, that, you know, that's a model that has worked. When you think about a, a number of students who have risk factors, you know, that they deal with every day that are at 100% graduating from high school and almost all of them in college. I mean, that really defies the statistical odds that await those students. And so I think we'll also discover things like that that are best practice things, but it's really about supporting each student with what they individually need. And that could be reading, but it also could be based on my socioeconomic status or even my disability, just whatever that may be. So I just wanted to point that out quickly before you have a chance to ask, ask questions.
All right. Any questions?
I have, I have several. Thanks, guys, for the great presentation. I love the Low Rider vehicle that the police department has just done a stellar job publicizing that. And as I, I finally got to see the presentation online this afternoon, I just wrote some questions down. And so the curriculum that is training our staff, how was that selected and can board members go through or the public and see what's being taught to the staff? Can you speak a little bit about that?
So let me ask, so follow the curriculum development for the Cornerstone specifically or just, just overall?
Cornerstone, yeah, the Cornerstone and what you've already done so far this year, I suppose. But yeah, the Cornerstone Learning, I wasn't aware that it was an e-learning platform, but can you tell us kind of what it all looks like and, and how we fine tune it to Olathe?
Yep. So what, what Cornerstone e-learning is actually, it's a curated resource bank. So there are a number of different sources that are out there. So Grovo, for example, is a micro learning system that has many videos that are already, so we're not necessarily creating the videos, so to speak, we're adding to it to tailor, to tailor it specifically to the needs of our, of our educators in our system. So as far as understanding what's out there, yes, it's, it's pretty accessible in terms of what, what it is to be able to approach and be able to understand the unique needs. So when you talk about videos on microaggressions, they have TED Talks that are on there that you can look up on YouTube that will be specific to education and thinking about specifically different needs that apply to our system. So yeah, so as far as that is concerned, additionally, as we think about the very similar to the work, the same things that you all had an opportunity to go through, just very simply on understanding DEI, we, we took our staff through that. So community that, that are tuned in, can, can re-watch this, can understand that. In addition to that, as we think about other things that we talked about, for example, culturally responsive teaching in the brain, a book that is a resource that we had that's readily available for anybody out there to read, that we use the culture tree to describe culture within our district. So as we think about the different things that are available, we have those understanding based upon the needs that, that are established within our, within our district.
So one thing I would just add to that, one of, one of the reasons why this team landed on Cornerstone is many times, and this kind of goes to some of the things we even talked about with some of the items before. And first is just clarity that this isn't a curriculum, this is PD for our staff, that's important to note. But the other piece that I would say too, is a lot of the things that are available in this space, you buy a three-year package and a company comes in and does all your professional development training for three solid years and, and those kinds of pieces. And our concern with that initially was that that assumes that whatever this training is, is going to fit us perfect in Olathe. And that concerned us as, as a district and as this team worked because we want to be able to be responsive to our community, we want to be able to be responsive to our students and most important, our staff, and most importantly, our students. And that's one of the great things about Cornerstone is, lack of a better term, there's a large library of options for us as a school system. And so we're really able to hone in based on the feedback from our students, our staff and patron input that we get over time too, on these look like things that we need to focus in on. So it allows us to customize it to some degree and also utilize the expertise that we have within our district instead of hiring a big national company to come in and, and do those kinds of things with us. Part of it right now is the survey from our August PD, it just went out two weeks ago in the AIM, something like that, does that sound about right? So they're in the process, AIM, sorry, I'm using words that nobody knows. That's, that's our newsletter that goes out to our staff, our certified licensed staff every other week. But there's a survey in there asking specifically, what are the next things that you'd like to know about and, and those kinds of things too. So I don't know if that completely answers the question, but it's, the power in it is it really gives us the opportunity to create something that's for us as a school system versus take this, use this.
And if, if board members ever wanted to see what we have access?
Absolutely.
Okay, awesome.
Yep, absolutely.
And so I, I was surprised to see how many people are in your office and wondered like migrant specialists and migrant aid, what do they do? Could you tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, absolutely. So the migrant program is a federal program that is established for kids to migrate from state to state due to agriculture. So any kid that, you know, might be following the crop, things of that nature, historically, they've had a hard time graduating, because, you know, credits might not transfer over, or they might not be able to get into school on time, or just communication between states. And so the migrant program essentially says, "Hey, we're going to work with these kids, and we're going to make sure they're on the right path, and then once they move, we can communicate with that school. This is where they were, this is what they've done, and move on." But we also support them with like para-support, which is what our aid is, also just school supplies, visiting, and making sure they're on track to graduate. And then we have a way of working with our seniors that need credit accrual as well.
And how many approximately do we have that fit this definition of migrant in our school district?
Absolutely. So every year, it fluctuates, because kids are on there for three years. But if they reach high school, then we'll serve them all the way through high school. We no longer, they're no longer necessarily technically in the program, but we make sure that we follow them through high school because they're going to be with us. And so right now, we're probably around 50 or 60, but in a few months, I think, actually, as a matter of fact, in the last week, we've picked up another 10. So, you know, that's just kind of how it works. Some kids will kind of fall off the caseload, and some new ones will come in. But we're usually, I would say, in the high end at about 80.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't even know about that. What did we do before we had this?
Yeah, so actually-
Did they just fall through the cracks, or?
So this program has been around for a long time in our district. I picked it up, I would say probably around four or five years ago, but it's been here for a while. So, you know, since I've taken over, I think we've been able to kind of tie it into more resources, since I was already working in other departments. But yeah, that's the idea, is to make sure they don't slip between the cracks. So we're actually very just fortunate that having G, who you saw on there as well, he is our in-house specialist. So he is always making sure if a family qualifies, or, you know, to make sure that they get the application filled out, so that they can get those benefits as well. And that comes with automatic, you know, lunch for school and things like that, so it's a really neat program.
It's a federally mandated program, so all school districts participate in it. One of the things Eric probably wouldn't share is, many times the students who come to us as migrants fall in love with Eric, fall in love with our schools and our community, and they don't want to leave. So, you know, one of the things that I'm proud of as a district is those kids get used to the support that they have many times, and we stick with them to make sure they get across the finish line, which is important, because that's doing the right thing for kids in our system.
Yeah, the majority of our kids migrate in, but they don't migrate out. They like Olahtha in these days.
That's awesome. So when we hear that people that want dollars to the classroom, the migrant aid would be in the classroom dollars, right? If he's technically a para?
Sure.
So these aren't people sitting in an office, just dreaming up new ways to change society, right?
No, absolutely not. They're out there working every day. As a matter of fact, you know, I wish we had more, because, you know, we have middle school, elementary, and high school, and then even kiddos that are not in school yet. So these guys are tasked with keeping up with everybody, and even G, who's our migrant specialist, still handles our elementary as well. So they're very busy.
I love seeing that we've grown our own. And when you say it's a federal mandate, I think the public should know, there's a lot of those, and 6% of our budget, John Hutchison, is it accurate? Is federally funded. So if we had a graphic up here of all the mandates, which this is what we should do, you know, but let's just clarify, you know, the budgets can get really wonky really quick because of mandates, and so thank you for that. The student engagement piece where you mentioned, the community business partnerships, is that what Heather Schoonover does? Are you partnering with her with that, or is it something different?
It's separate. Now, we do work with Heather as well, but I knew you were referring to like the SPOT program with all the different partners that come in?
It's the faith-based, community, and civic-based?
Yeah, so she does that, and we work with her as far as like when we have students that are homeless youth. But no, this is actually a partnership that we created specifically for this programming.
Okay. And then affinity groups. So if there's someone that doesn't, I'm trying to think of the word, belonged to a particular group, are they allowed to participate?
Yeah, you can show up.
Okay.
But with the understanding that the clear objective is to support that specific group within there that is represented. So that's the clear thing, too. It's not exclusionary in the sense of saying, "You can't show up," but understanding that you can't come in and say, "Hey, I want to talk about this, I want to do this," but that's not the objective or the focal point of what the group is designed to do.
That makes sense. And so you have three, I think you said, established now?
Yeah.
And what's that process? I mean, as there's need, you-
As there are needs, and those that, so the development of those specific three came as a result of conversations and various kind of focus groups that we conducted through last year, at the beginning of last year. And part of that need is, "Hey, we don't know where everybody is. Do we have a space to even come together and convene?" And that was a direct result of that, being able to be responsive to the need for our employees.
Is it done during the school day?
No. So they have the, so most meet after hour. So there's a 4:30, 4 o'clock meeting, to meet on their own time, to be able to come together, because they consider it that important for them.
Another example of how you could use, or why the affinity group is so important, so you think about, just like you said, where is everybody at? You know, when we talk about retention, even recruiting, to try to match our demographics, you think about, "I've got to find a place where I feel I need to find out." I've never been to Johnson County. I've never lived outside of whatever state it has. So where can I go to go find tortilla mix? Because I can't find it anywhere. Where can I go to find a certain, you know, product? Or where do we find things that are happening within our community, or within our culture? And that's what they're there for, so that they provide that support as well, just to help with the networking. I think that's the other process, is that we're not going to deny anyone. It's not there to be an ally in any way, it's just there for that support and networking.
Thank you. And then can we talk about the Equity Hotline? So, is there a due process format? I mean, what would the procedures look like? I know that you told me, you know, the intent, but let's say one of my white male sons got called or reported, and it was anonymous, and someone made a claim, what would that process look like?
So, just to clarify, so someone calls in and says, "Your son did something," or whatever-
My son's a racist, yeah.
Okay. So the process would be, is always working with the school, anonymous, obviously not having that information. So they have the option of saying, "Do I want to call back?" To be able to do that. If they choose not to, let's say that someone calls and your son is, you know, anonymous, we would contact the school and work with the building administrator, update them, and again, just like they would with any other situation, is working through that due process, just to find out, "Hey, can you tell me about this?" And making sure that we're looking into it, just like we would with any other report that we may get. And so there would be that due process. "I've got to investigate, I've got to look into it, you know, either address it, or if we didn't find anything, just like we would handle any one of them." The other thing is, each one of them is going to be handled in a case-by-case basis, right? It's going to depend on what the situation is and how we handle it. But again, always keeping that partnership with the school, because we're there as a resource and for support. And so if someone's reporting that, we've got to work with the school. It's not Eric and Marquis's job to do that portion of it, because that's where the school administration comes in.
And sometimes, and Dr. G talked about school administration, but there also might be times where, you know, it's a call to the school council. Based on what I'm hearing, this is actually probably something for the school counselor to, you know, visit with a student about that kind of thing too. And I think it's important, as Dr. G just said, to note that it's not a kind of one-size-fits-all. And, you know, the other thing that I think is really important to remember as we talk about this, is it's not a "gotcha." You know, it's just like some of the other numbers that we have in our schools, our "See Something, Say Something" hotline, and those kinds of things, that generally, those things are advertised as a place where somebody's just not sure, "Where do I turn? Who do I talk to? Where those pieces are?" And, you know, credit to our teachers and our staff and our schools, most of these things happen that way, where they, a student feels connected, or a staff member feels connected with someone else, and they won't ever even utilize, you know, the Equity Number, just like they don't use the bowling hotline, or the "Say Something, See Something" hotline. But, you know, at the end of the day, if we have two students in this district that don't know how, who to turn to, and they need support, just like in those areas, that, you know, we'll offer that should somebody need it.
I just would love to throw in a cautionary note on the hotline. Don't love it. I want a firm process defined, you know, in case a teacher is reported, you know, falsely, let's say a false accusation of racism, or, you know, exclusion for a lifestyle. I feel we owe it to our students and staff to say, "Okay, if this were to happen, this isn't a 'got you,' we can't say that. We need to say, 'This is what you can expect the process would be.'" And I personally think having just the email, you know, feels more of what you're describing as trying to facilitate inclusion, warm and welcoming to our community. And the Equity Audit that we keep hearing about, I still don't have a feel for what that is. So I'm not going to keep tying up the meeting, but to me, the good work that we need to do, it needs to be measurable, and we need to be accountable for what we're measuring. I mean, saying equity is kind of still squishy for some people in my, so what are you looking at? Like, what are the top 10 things you're looking at? How are you measuring them? And how are you going to show the return on investment for the district? When we see that much in staff, you know, commitment that we've made, we need to make sure that we can articulate our return on investment. Does that make sense?
So a couple of things I'd mention about that, and then Dr. G or Eric or Marquis can jump in too. But, you know, as a school system, there are things that are fairly publicly accessible that would show that we have some work to do in this area. You know, nationally, statistics of, you know, students' achievement levels in school districts across the nation would show typically that our students of color don't perform at the same rate as our students who are not of color, those kinds of things. And I would tell you that we have some of that in our system, and so an audit would help us with that. It would also look at things like our sports teams. So if a school is, you know, 17% Hispanic, is there a decent representation of Hispanic students on the sports teams in the school, and in the theater groups, and those kinds of things? So as we look at that, knowing that there's not a perfect science to that, but as we look at opportunities for our kids and opportunities for our students, an Equity Audit will help us bear some of that data out. Things like our policies. Do we have policies that are potentially, you know, aligning us as a system one way or the other, for whatever reason? And again, not just about color and those sorts of things, but lots of different things. You know, one of the things that, as we think about this work, that's really important for us to consider, is information about our students with special needs. You know, what are we doing as a system to support those students and their participation and everything that they do? But the nice thing about the audit is it will give us the opportunity to probably look at our data in ways that we haven't necessarily dug into before. And again, find those areas where, okay, this is a place we're hitting it out of the park, we're doing this just right, and what are some of those areas that we need to focus on as a school system? And then some strategy behind that. So if we look at it, and we recognize that we have, you know, student groups, for example, who are not performing as well on ACTs, or not participating in the ACT like some of our other groups of students, how do we incorporate that through our targeted efforts to say, "Hey, let's get more kids involved in taking the ACT." And that's a small example, but, you know, for kids in our system who may not have the knowledge about the ACT, that's real money to go to college. And so there's some of those kinds of things even, that, you know, are kind of outside of what we would typically think about, but there's some of those things as a system that we probably owe it to our students to peel back the layers and look at. And so to me, that's what it is. I don't think, you know, we're after anything that would come back, that, you know, somebody would come back and say, "You need to quit doing this, and this, and this immediately. You need to get rid of these books on your library shelves, and bring these ones in," that kind of thing. That's not what we're talking about. I mean, it's really about, what does data tell us about our system, and what we're doing well, what we're not doing well? What do our policies have in them that we need to think about in terms of supporting all students and staff and that kind of thing? So, and part of it is maybe a little bit challenging for us to answer, because we haven't actually gone through the whole process yet. You know, it's starting that process and working through it that way.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I was, sorry, I was just going to ask one here real quick about the, I mean, I would say that, you know, finding out the, with some of these groups, like being able to retain, I mean, the teacher shortage and some of those types of things, and staffing issues, I think this will be beneficial if we can, again, if the ultimate goal is to help them feel like they have some commonalities and that type of thing, I think being able to retain and attract, then from there, I think will be very beneficial. So it'll be interesting to see how those affinity groups from different levels actually work out. But I just want, yeah, I'd say thank you so much for working on this. I was able to come to the spot, and it's awesome. I was going to ask really quickly about the community involvement. How can people, I mean, you have a lot of different groups, and community input and that type of thing, and this is really a community welcoming type piece, and making sure we're all understanding what's going on. How do people get involved? What are some things that are really out there to be able to do? I was just, and who would they contact?
Absolutely. So Jean, right there, and we can, you can look him up on our website and see his email address, but he's in charge of our volunteers. Of course, any, you know, group that wants to come in, and we give tours, VIP tours. So if anybody wants to come in and check out the spot, we can give them a tour, and if they think it's a great fit, then we'll put them on there. You know, that is one of the neatest things to see, is just everybody coming together and hanging out with kids. You know, I think that's what it's all about. And I did want to mention one thing I forgot too, since we're talking about the spot. We got the opportunity this year as well, that I'm going to have a parent educator, so Isabel Gutierrez, who was a parent's teacher for a long, long time, she's amazing. I was able to get her to work with us, and she's going to be teaching parenting classes, both in English and in Spanish, and of course, in other languages, we can use interpreters as well. And they're going to be five-week sessions, and so we're going to give the opportunity to each school to bring their group for five weeks, and then kind of alternate and go around. And really just talking about our kids, talking about also just the education system. You know, I know that my kid, I have three in college right now, and it's like crazy, like even though I work in this field, it's like, huh? You know, so kind of allowing people to ask those questions about FAFSA and scholarships and all those kinds of things, and I'm working that route. But absolutely, it's community-based, and we love it, so just reach out to Jean, and we'll plug you in.
Okay. Thank you. Great work. The other thing, Mr. Gary, I'm sorry I keep chiming in, but I want to make sure we say all the important things tonight. One of the things too, that these guys have been doing since the development of the office, is just responding to emails constantly. The number of community members who they've sat down with, who have just reached out and said, "Hey, I want to pick your brain, I want to give you some feedback." So as our community is engaged in listening to our board meeting tonight, we know that there's thoughts out there, and things that are perspectives that we may not be thinking of. So I would just say to our community too, don't ever hesitate to reach out to any of these three folks. Jean is happy to visit too, but, you know, the power in this work is really about conversations and understanding, and trying to, you know, understand as many perspectives as we can. So not to do that for them, but I would offer that up too, that feel free to reach out via email, pick up the phone, call them, have a cup of coffee, any of those kinds of things, because we have a lot of expertise standing by the podium right now.
Can I add one more question? How does someone get appointed to the Advisory Council?
So, generally what the process was, was that we solicited our applications at the beginning of last school year, and then just recently, the mid-spring, at the start of last spring semester. And generally what happens is, we do it based on need of what spaces did not get filled. So we look at our students, okay, for example, we had two students that graduated, one that graduated from Olahtha Northwest, and another that graduated from Olahtha East. So we knew we needed a student, for example. So that comes on principal recommendation. Reach out to the principal, what student representative do you want to have that looks at that? As far as community or staff members, we look based upon the need and the feeder pattern. So if we're looking at middle school, okay, what middle school do we, what middle school reps or anything? We can't have every single one, obviously, because we have a 200-member council. But just knowing that we have a representative at the middle school, at the high school, and at the elementary level, both for parents, as well as for our staff, and also for administrators. And then the other piece is looking at, from a community standpoint, where are those gaps as far as voices that we may not hear? Thinking about community organizations that are really vetted, one being Mission Southside, for example, or the India Association of Kansas City, who we had actively engaged with before, but we have the opportunity to do so now. So when we're looking at that, that's really what the need is. So the team sits down, really looks at what, based upon that need, and where those opportunities are for students.
Two-year commitment, is that correct?
Yeah, so it's a two-year commitment when you sign up to be a part of it, and then they serve on subcommittees, being the student, employee, and community engagement subcommittee to really carry out the vision of the work, and a lot of the different things that we talked about today and earlier a little bit, just about that. So that's where they have the opportunity to do that.
Awesome. And do you publish your minutes online, so people that are interested could, you know, hear the good-
So that's something this year, really moving to, as we were figuring out our system and figuring out our flow. So currently, you can go on the website right now, see the, see the members that are represented, so who's who, who's what. And then we just had our first meeting, what, literally Wednesday, so last night, so we'll have that up here in a timely manner, but yeah. So they'll have the opportunity to know what was talked about and what was discussed. And they also have the opportunity, I think it's important, via our email, if there are community requests of understanding, hey, maybe I wanna come present, or maybe I wanna come, I have a question about a process, there is that opportunity as well. That's what those representatives come, and that's why they represent our community as a whole. So that's where they have the opportunity to.
There's a lot of work you're describing, and thanks for doing it. The more transparent you can be, I think, the more it helps everybody. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Berdich?
Yeah, go ahead, Brad.
I did have a question, but I just wanna send my thanks to the entire department. Well, actually, when I came before the board, I remember that meeting and I remember, you know, the board challenging that group, that team, when it came to accountability and what was gonna be different. And I do serve on the DEAC as a board member, and I know the long hours that they have put in, so I didn't wanna miss the opportunity to say thank you to them and to the committee members and all of our partners that have been rolling up their sleeves and putting in the work in such a short period of time. And I'm just looking forward to see, you know, the work that this group can carry forward. And I don't want them to, you know, to take their foot off the gas pedal. There is, we've done a lot of work in a short period, short period of time, but there's still more work for us to do, and I still want us to, you know, be aggressive and, as Lea said, be aggressive and transparent in what we're doing. But yeah, I did wanna miss the opportunity to say thank you to Eric and the entire team for the incredible work that they've done in just a short period of time.
Well, and I'd also like to, just real quickly, I appreciate the intentionality, and we've heard that several times. I think it's important to note that Eric, you've been working on this stuff for a long time. A lot of people have in a lot of different areas, and that intentionality is to bring it all together so that we can move it all forward. And I love the new stuff, but I think it was just so important to be intentional to say, a lot of good work being done. There are a lot of things that are kind of happening, but it's disjointed, right? And so to bring it all together under one plan, I think is exciting for going forward.
All right. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, and we will move on to our next information presentation, 3.02, Learning Services Update.
Should we potentially give them a time limit for this one? We could. Just kidding.
Sitting in my seat, I was, I almost returned back to my St. Louis roots. I was like, really? I gotta go behind that? Good evening, board members, superintendent, colleagues, and community members. This evening, Learning Services is going to announce the launching of its all-new healthy snack for children ages 12 and under, the bacon jerky. I'm just sorry.
First time at the mic.
So, community is, although it's important to understand that teachers are charged with moving students forward academically, I think it's equally important for you to know that there's, there are many things and many people that are in charge of a lot of things behind the scenes that knock down barriers for teachers to move students. I just happen to be a supporter of one of the best departments in the district, the Learning Services team. We have Richard Wilson, who's the Director of Curriculum and Assessment, Angelette Tolman, Executive Director of Special Services, TJ Olmer, Director of Blended Learning, Angie Salva, Director of SEL and Mental Health, Dr. Ann Addison, Director of New Teacher Induction and University Partnership, Kelly Tynes, Coordinator of Coaching, Andrea Polakovic, Director of Learning Services. We have Michael Flentrop, Coordinator for World Language and ELL, Alicia Jackson, Coordinator of Counseling and College Career Readiness, and Jenna Cooter, Assistant Director of Professional Development. This evening, Rich Wilson, Director of Curriculum and Assessment, will be sharing a comparison of the Olathe School District's data for school years 2018, 19, and 2021, after which Angelette Tolman will be sharing information and testimonials regarding the district's Summer Academy and ESY. Rich then will return and just kind of inform you on how the Learning Services is using the S dollars to support every student in every school.
Good evening. Thank you. Whoops. I think I do this every time I come up here. So this is gonna be fun because it's numbers. We like no stories. So, right. So Dr. Triplet's right, we, so the data I wanted to present with you, the last, you know, the year that we lost the spring to COVID, right? We didn't have any fall, or spring testing, and so we didn't have that full year to look at, so we went back two years. And that data is fairly stable with both the state assessment and with MAP data, which is what I'm gonna share with you tonight. So Dr. Jaeger had asked that I, if you don't know, or if you do, I'll remind you about with how the state assessment works. Students third grade through eighth grade and then 10th grade take ELA and math tests, and then 11th grade will, and fifth grade and eighth grade will take science. We're gonna really focus on ELA and math tonight. And the way the test goes is the school, or the students that take the assessment, they get a score, it's scaled, and then it's put on a four-point leveling system that gets reported to the feds. And so Level 1 is what the state terms as below grade level, or at least not nearing proficiency. Level 2 is on-grade level. Level 3 and Level 4 essentially grade level in career and college readiness or above grade level. And so what I've provided for you today, so it wasn't too much information, is some Level 1 data, so that's that below proficiency level, and then our CCR, College and Career Readiness data, that's those levels 3 and 4 together. So what you can see here is remembering that we lost the spring, and we had the summer gap, and then we had last year, which was all kind of janky, right? So we, with, what happened with reading is really quite remarkable, that our Level 1s, we had more Level 1s this past year than we did two years ago, but if we compare that to where the state is, which that's really the best comparison of where we are is where the rest of the state is as well, is that we are, I wanna make sure my numbers are right, that we are six percent higher across the board, or six percent lower across the board with our Level 1. So we had fewer Level 1s than the average on the state, which is right about where we normally are. But you can also see from this data that the younger grade levels had a few more Level 1s, those are those newer readers who lost the spring, the summer, last year was hard. But as the, as the students move into middle and high school, we close the gap. And so that data is all really good. And then, as you can see, the CCR data, those Level 3s and 4s, we had about the same percentages as we did a couple of years ago. So in my opinion, right on track. We also look at the MAP data. So MAP has, MAP measures two things for us. So one of it is academic data and where students are at the time they take the tests, and it gives them a percentile rank against other students in the nation. It also measures growth over time, and so we look at growth from the fall to the spring. What I've provided for you here are the average RIT scores, so that's on MAP, that's how they score it. It's, you know, like ACT has a high score of 36, and the SAT has a high score of 1600, like MAP has what they term RIT scores. And so you can see also from this data that we are right on track to where we are two years ago and well above national norms, which is where we normally are. So reading-wise, across the district, we have kids about where they normally would be, which is all a huge celebration. As we look at math, now math was a little bit different. It's very, it's significant to lose that spring because that was new content that those students lost in math. And we, last summer, made a decision that, the idea wasn't that we were just gonna make up all of that lost time, but we were going to fill the gaps as needed, focus on priority standards, and really make a difference that way by kind of removing some of the minutia in our courses and really focusing on those priorities. So math on the Kansas assessment, you can see that we also had a few more Level 1s than we normally will, but we were still well above the state averages by at least six, I'm sorry, I said it wrong again, under the state average of Level 1s by at least six percent at all grade levels. And then our college and career readiness numbers were also above the state average by four percent. As we look at the MAP data though, this is the one that's the most interesting to me. You can see that, again, that our scores are relatively the same as they were a couple of years ago. But what was really interesting about this, you might remember that Mr. Allison had mentioned that at the beginning of last year, our MAP scores in math were down, and he had said that it was, we were about four percent below where we normally were. We had provided you some data very similar to this. One of the things that happened over this past year, which was remarkable and a massive testament to our teachers and our curriculum work behind the scenes, but this would also be the work of science teachers and anybody else who fit into math, is that our spring, or I'm sorry, fall to spring growth data was actually the highest we've ever had in the five-year history of MAP in the district. So we had more kids, in some cases, over sixty percent of our kids, which is a pretty strenuous math growth mark, which was higher than we've ever had before. So our students started behind, but we made up a ton of ground last year, and so we ended very close to where we have been in the past. State assessment didn't show that nearly as much, but the whole state dropped, but our MAP data nationally is right on track. So huge celebration, I think, for the work that our teachers and our students accomplished over the last year. Really excited about what's gonna happen moving forward, so I hope that's all good news. Any questions in this group before I turn this over to Angelette as our presentation takes a turn to some other things? I was just gonna ask, and this might be for yourself or whoever, but I would, I mean, it's a little bit like, uh-huh, you know, when you see some of this, but you have to expect it a little bit, again, given the world that we've been in. How are we, like, I mean, and we're not just gonna click our fingers and have it back, but what are some very specific things that we're doing to?
That's a left turn you're about to.
Great. We're gonna pick that up in just a few minutes. Sorry.
No, it's a great question. It's the question, and I'll come back to it.
Good evening. I am so happy if you could see my face right now. I am smiling big. I'm gonna talk to you about student learning tonight, and I consider myself to be this commercial break in Rich's numbers, so we're not gonna talk heavy stuff. We're actually gonna talk some really great things that our district has been doing to support students based on that data and where we are. So the two topics that I wanna talk to you about this evening are Summer Academy and Extended School Year. And I have a couple of slides on both of them, both of these topics, but what I wanna point out first is that these are areas that we have worked with in summers past. So this isn't new, Summer Academy and Extended School Year. However, the way that we operated is different compared to previous years. So for Summer Academy, one of the things that we did was we began shaving down, using the data, and identifying priority standards in both math and reading. And students who were ready to learn those standards were the students that were invited to Summer Academy. So as you look at some of these pictures right here on your screen, you will notice that you see a lot of different things that pop up, but there's a lot of fun occurring as well here at Summer Academy. And in addition to the academic pieces, there was a lot of social-emotional skills that were taught at Summer Academy. So the data that we wanna point out from Summer Academy is that through the work of our staff with professional learning communities to really drive how we were serving our students, those efforts show that ninety-two percent of the students had growth in the area of math in that one month of summer, and ninety-seven percent of them grew in the reading. So again, it was very specific standards that we worked on, but the data obviously speaks for itself. This is the best part of the presentation. Look at the faces, read the comments. So this was students, and we were asking them, you know, what did you like the most about coming to Summer Academy? And the first one, my teacher greeted me outside his door each day and just made me feel so welcome. I liked playing games to review what we learned. Every day, we did an activity to get to know each other better. For me, a lot of that is a resounding and overwhelming piece to what they missed during our learning, our sporadic learning of in-person and remote. And so it's really great to hear those students vocalize that, that they're really connecting back with not only their teachers and their learning, but other students. So the staff, some of the favorite pieces for them was the professional learning communities, so just really being able to sit down and have strengthening conversations about the student data and reflect on how they were gonna use that and build on their lessons throughout the course of the academy. Job-embedded professional development, a greater understanding of the priority standards for each grade level and how effective PLC work is in enhancing instruction from day to day. Under the social-emotional area, I grew professionally by being more aware of how cooperative learning strategies can encourage students' social-emotional growth and engagement. Pretty powerful stuff from our staff as well. Extended School Year, this is strictly for individuals with disabilities, and they are eligible based on an IEP team decision. And what the work around ESY is, is to help students maintain skills that they have mastered throughout the school year or on the cusp of mastering. And we had approximately 500 students attend our Extended School Year program in 2021. That would be all the way from early childhood to high school. And again, we asked the students, and you've, you've gotta remember that some of these students don't have a lot of verbal communication skills, and it's really great to be able to get some of the responses that we got. The first thing, you know, I had fun. It was fun to be there. My teacher cared about me, and I got to make new friends. So the parallels drawn between Summer Academy and Extended School Year align perfectly, and again, it's just speaking to the work that we're doing and committing to try and getting students back in and learning. What did our staff love about Extended School Year? There was a lot of opportunity to be creative. They loved the encouragement that they received from administrators and felt like that they weren't really out of their way to support them. And the last one, I have loved working ESY. I've enjoyed being with the kiddos, meeting new kiddos, and getting to work with others across the district. So in closing, I want to mention that our summer programming with Summer Academy and Extended School Year is a huge lift for our system when we think about the number of support staff that it takes to do it. We are in buildings all over the district, and we have paraprofessionals, we have teachers, we have administrators, we have buses, we have, you know, I mean, the list goes on and on. And after a year like we had last year, it is, just shows the resilience of our staff to say, I'm still so committed that I'm gonna use some of my summertime to continue serving our students. So with that, thank you for the pleasure of being able to share some of that great stuff. I'm gonna turn it back over to Rich just to talk about some of the other opportunities that we continue to do to support our students.
Thank you. Okay, so this also is, so Angelette, I'm glad she mentioned that because I was gonna say it too, just the resiliency of our staff to be available to offer summer programs. And so with the CARES Act, SRTU money, Dr. Jaeger had charged us with, like, how can we really take advantage of this summer and kind of bridge this gap and keep education going into this current school year? And so we created three committees. The first one is the Summer Flip. So Families Learning and Partnership is a program that we have at our title schools throughout the year normally, and we will continue to do that, but we decided, and Dr. Ann Addison, who's here tonight, she was kind of, took charge of that group along with two teachers, Kristen Howell and Patty Mulligan, and they took this idea of flip during the year, and we pressed it into the summer. We put it right on the tail end of Summer Academy so that some of those students who we were serving, we could continue to serve and arm them and their families with activities for the rest of the summer to kind of close that gap. You can see up here that we had about 220-plus kids that were involved with their families. We had nineteen teachers that were involved, and we had interpreters, and we had adult childcare, and we had seven students from our district, high school students that helped us as well that summer, which was really awesome. Couple of the additional stories that happened there is, we had a few schools that had a lower enrollment than we had hoped, and so a couple of members of our group decided that we were gonna extend Summer Flip a little bit further, and they took a group of staff and food and flip activities over to a neighboring apartment complex to serve that community right there. And then we also had books and lunches distributed at Ridge View and SFT to support those communities as well. It was awesome. And we had Kona Ice at every one of our stops, which was fantastic. Usually it's pizza, but it was the summer, so we went different. We also had a program that worked on, as Dr. Jaeger would say, we gotta take care of both ends of our spectrum. So we have these kids at high school that are getting ready to graduate, and we gotta get them across that finish line. So we had this credit recovery program that Alicia Jackson and Michael Flentrop, and Alicia's here tonight as well, that they led that. So we were able to offer stipends for four teachers at all of the high schools and two at Mill Creek, and they were charged with creating some unique and interesting programs, creative ways to help kids get those, that credit recovered. And they were also able to hire additional staff at the school if they needed to do so. We recovered over 500 courses this summer. It was amazing, incredible work. We had a student who was super interested in being at OATC this summer, and We had a student who was super interested in being at OATC this summer, and he finished three courses. And we had another that was, because of the uniqueness of the program at her school, we had a student that was able to work from home, help her mom out as they had a sick relative at home, and finish recovering her credit. And then one of our schools reported that they were so excited about the work that they did this summer that they want to extend it and use it in the future as well. So really, really exciting stuff. The other thing that is currently happening is we have these extended learning grants that Kelly Tynes is running. Kelly's also here on the far end. And the idea behind this was that we have funds for schools to apply for a grant, and if they want to do something before school or after school, it had to be around the ideas of academics or some kind of BSEL activities. They were able to apply up to $5,000, and so we challenged them to dream big. And a couple of activities that are going on right now through the grant is Tomahawks purchase some rollerblades and working with their PE teachers and counselors to kind of show that connection between social emotional regulation and fun and how that's connected to reducing stress and anxiety. I'm gonna go get some rollerblades myself. Heritage began to work in a program that they were calling Level Up, where they were giving some very specific math intervention right away, and then coupling that with some fun. And Santa Fe is using Jump Start, where they grabbed students that were coming into their school in the summer and got them ready for middle school before they got there. Super awesome. Mr. Gary's going, I haven't heard my answer to my question yet. Heard it. After this, so this is a list of all of the schools that have started a program. They have the next, well, this semester and the next three semesters to have a program. They can renew what they're currently doing, they can re-envision what they're doing, others can come on board as well. But we have a lot of people who are taking advantage of this. The last thing we were able to do is this, and this was, Dr. Jaeger will attest to this, this was about two or three months of like wrangling this together. But we were able to take some of this Essar money, and we hired 25 staff members, pulled them out of classrooms. 24 of them came from Olathe. We borrowed one from one of our neighboring districts. And we created these roles called MTSS Support Specialists. So Mr. Gary, to your question, we know that reading caught early can be improved quicker, right, with those littles. And so with the state's dyslexia mandate, we thought, you know what, we have a lot to roll out this year. We have a brand-new, we have to have an assessment that's going to be able to target and identify students who are struggling with reading early. We also have to have interventions in place. That's the MTSS, the Multi-Tierred Support System. And we also have a phonics resource that our elementary students or teachers are taking on this year, and that is a massive, massive lift. That has a lot to do for a single elementary teacher. So these Support Specialists, 14 of them, are dedicated specifically to early literacy. They also are working with middle schools and high schools on their literacy, as we know that we have students who struggle with reading at all levels. We also hired 11 people to work in mathematics. And so we're trying to hit both of those heavy core areas at the same time. Mathematics is not the specific lift right now. It's, we have buildings that are opting in as they're ready. We just know that literacy is the heavy lift to begin with. So as you ask about how are we continuing to close the gap with our numbers that I introduced to you earlier, these folks are helping us along with all of our elementary staff, our middle school staff, and our high school staff, as we are identifying students that require additional assistance, additional time, additional resources and all of that, additional intervention, identification, and these folks are helping us do that. So these Essar II monies have been really, really important. And so I'm gonna ask if anybody has a question. My guess, Dr. Jaeger's gonna say something. Because usually if I talk, that's what happens, but never mind. Okay, does anybody have any questions about any of that?
Any questions?
Any questions?
I'm curious how you're deploying these MTSS Support Specialists and how you identify, are they individual cases? Do you look at school-wide, where the greatest need is, where you can have the greatest impact with them? What's your process like?
That was a great question. So of the 14 that we have, actually, they are assigned to four separate buildings. And we have hired, I mean, we have school psychs, we have elementary teachers, middle school teachers, high school teachers, like that's who's been part of this collection, and they are serving K-12. So we even have a high school, former high school AP teacher who is working with elementary students. They spent three weeks this summer before school started. They got trained in our resources, they got trained in the interventions. We actually did a lot of training on how do you help adults make this change when maybe they're not ready for it, right? Whatever I've done has always worked, I don't want to change. Well, we have data that says it's not working, and so how do we help move or shape that path for them? And we, they were trained in how to have those conversations. So we actually serve every single building. Nobody opts in. We, they work with teacher PLCs at every grade level. And so when you ask how they're deployed, they're in a building a whole day. Every week they visit, like, I should say it this way, every week, each building gets one of these specialists for a full day.
And one of the things also to think about, and some of it dovetails with the conversation we've had about dyslexia mandate from the state and structured literacy, science of reading, those pieces that we've talked about, but one of the initial things that they're also working with our schools on is universal, is implementing a universal screener. For us, that's the MAP assessment, at most grade levels. We have AMIRA, which has been on our board agenda for also our elementary schools, but essentially it's looking at a universal screener like the MAP assessment, and then determining based on that and reading and math, who are the kids that look like they need support? And then if they indicate that they may need some support, then we do what's called a diagnostic assessment, where then we go in and try to really tease out what does the intervention and support look like that will best support the student either in math or reading. So part of their work is also helping our teams identify and working through that process based on individual student data. You know, one of the things that you saw in the presentation, it was meeting students where they are, and that's really an important piece for us in Olathe, because our data is not such that we can say, all right, we need to rewrite our curriculum in fourth grade because we can identify this spot right here. It's really about knowing our students as learners through our assessment data. One of the things Rich didn't mention was the power of formative assessment, and our staff is really good at that, and that is, when they teach a standard or they teach a piece in their classrooms, being able to identify very quickly, here are the students that don't get this piece of it, and then how I'm gonna intervene really quick to plug that hole. And that's part of the conversation with the big three and PLCs and Mastery Connect, which you all have heard about. Those are pieces that also inform that work moving forward.
So another question about, the funding for this is coming from Assar funds, correct?
Yep.
It sounds to me like this is potentially a very, if it's a successful model for getting students from where they are to where we need them to be, is there any forecast of sustainability where we could continue this program if we find that it's very effective?
Well...
So I'll take that first, if that's okay. So one of the reasons why we have the MTSS Support Specialists is really the intention of helping support our staff, so they're in a place in two years or three years when the Assar funds dry up, that they're able to do it. So, you know, there was obviously some, well, there's some districts around that have said, okay, we need to use some of these Assar funds and hire a reading specialist and a math specialist for every school in the district. But the problem with that becomes the sustainability of that model. So as we really worked hard to figure out, how do we best utilize these funds to make a long-term, distant difference for our students, where we landed was, let's get a group of people that can really get the rest of our staff to where they need to be with this information, so when the Assar funds dry up, we will be able to continue. The reason why I asked to talk and not have Rich start is because Rich would have said, we have a plan, but actually the plan should be that we should just keep these people for all of ever. But, you know, right now, we're grateful for the additional support and helping our teams and our staff get this up and going.
Actually, Kristen, what I would have said, which would have been the same thing, but not as long, I would have said, we actually, our motto is we're trying to work ourselves out of a job, right? And it is exactly that. We want the buildings to be able to sustain it. We want to help our instructional coaches, who are part of our normal staff, for them to be able to take that support and run with it afterwards. But we have to, like, I refer to them as like SEAL Team Six. We're in, we do the job, and we're out. And they have embraced that like crazy. They are, I wish you could meet them. They are 26, or 25 of the greatest, hardest-working people that we have in the district. They're awesome. They're killing it right now.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
You are very welcome.
Thanks so much.
All right, and now we are on to public comments. Mr. Gary?
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium. At the front of the room, state your name. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to two minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the two-minute time limit has expired. Please, excuse me, please direct your comments to the entire board, and if a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individuals, staff members, or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audio-recorded as a matter of public record. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gary. Our first speaker is Becca Vanderhorst.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Becca Vanderhorst, and I have three elementary-age children in Olathe schools. I speak as someone who is fully vaccinated and plan to get my kids fully vaccinated once it is available to them. I've heard it said repeatedly that we need to limit the spread of COVID-19 in our schools. Statistics have shown us over the past 18 months that thankfully, children are not seriously affected by COVID. Most times, their cases are asymptomatic or that of a mild cold. Pre-COVID, we wouldn't have any qualms about our children getting colds from school. I'm concerned about the social and emotional development of our children when they can't see facial expressions. I'm concerned about my son, who is in speech therapy. I'm sure it's been hard to make as much progress as he can, while both he and the speech pathologists are masked. Back in 2009, we didn't think about masking children because of swine flu, which had more serious effects on our children than COVID. Are we masking to prevent adults from getting sick? COVID should not be a concern for vaccinated individuals. If they end up getting sick with COVID after vaccination, it will be a mild case. These vaccines are a godsend and are incredibly effective. Why are we masking our children to protect adults who can protect themselves by getting vaccinated? I do not support the following, but if you want to require anything, require faculty and staff to get vaccinated or to wear an N95 mask. But we don't need to protect, need to have our children protect those who have the ability to protect themselves. If people choose not to get vaccinated, they have assumed the risk of COVID, and that is their individual responsibility. District statistics from last year show that less than 1% of children exposed in our schools ended up testing positive for COVID. If masks are still required and vaccinations are on the rise, can we at least do away with quarantining exposed children who will most likely end up testing negative anyways? At some point, the masks need to come off. Thank you for listening to my concerns. Even if we don't always agree with the school board decisions made, our family will continue to be supportive community members. I recognize each of you has, at times, a thankless job. Thank you for doing the best that you can for our children, especially during these difficult times. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jamie Cernich.
I'm Jamie K. Cernich. I just wanted to say that I'm absolutely disgusted by the majority of some board members and their lack of respect and gross overreach of power by not allowing parents to make health decisions regarding their own children. It's nothing less than tyranny. Masks become so politicized that it's preventing rational thinking and common sense. They are a constant reminder that we're supposed to live here, fear of a virus that has a 99.95 and higher survival rate. And the 0-19 age group literally has the lowest transfer ratio to others in the entire U.S. That would also include teachers. I was informed that the board bases our decisions off of not only the recommendations of the CDC, which I think we can all agree has lost most credibility, some doctors from children's emergency, a few local pediatricians and state and local officials. Yet I've never seen or received any scientific, peer-reviewed documentation that proves the safety and effectiveness of wearing masks seven-plus hours a day in children. However, I have seen plenty of studies of the ineffectiveness masks based on the simple fact that viruses are .125 microns. The finest grain of espresso is 200 microns, for reference. Bottom lines, masks don't protect you against any virus. What they can cause, though, are respiratory infection and inflammatory fibrotic lung disease due to the graphene particles and polypropylene found in the majority of disposable mask production. Other risks include headaches, chronic dermatitis, lightheadedness, but the most dangerous of all is the suppressed immune system. Forcing students to wear masks is nonsensical, illogical, and just plain un-American. The risks should never outweigh the benefit. It's time the 99% stop catering to the 1%.
Brian Connell.
I'm Brian Connell. I'm gonna let the clock run off 13 seconds for the kids of some of my friends that didn't make it back from Afghanistan. Most of you all, you know my primary advocacy is always kids first in Olathe schools. That means that every decision, every presentation, every effort needs to have the care and core issues focused on what's right, good, and best for every child. I will tell you that I was very pleased with the DEI presentation tonight. I like the outline. It has a really good start, because it really does say, we want every kid to be represented. Kids are still my focus, but tonight I want to talk to you about the emails and the texts and some of the things I mentioned with Dr. Jaeger today that I'm getting from teachers. Our teachers and staff need our help. Several teachers have communicated with me that this is the hardest three weeks of their careers, even worse than last year. They got the vaccines and pushed to do it, and they were pushed to in the spring and never got to remove their masks as promised. They're feeling isolated. We've got teachers with cancer and heart issues who have not been given the exemption to take off their mask to be in front of their kids. You have teachers that need to read lips to see and hear, and we're not exempting them, and we're not taking care of them. Food service, low pay and not enough help out there. Our staff are working their butts off. If you have 286 open positions on this school district, we've gotta get filled to take care of our teachers. That's what I want to make sure that you hear, is that the teachers need us to be more diligent, all of us. Care for them, respect them, pay them.
Megan Bricks.
My name is Megan Bricks, and I am a proud elementary music teacher here at the Olathe Public Schools. Well, tonight, I'm here to celebrate the first three weeks of this 21-22 school year. As I greeted my students during our first three weeks of music classes, I asked each student to tell me one thing they were most excited for this school year when they introduced themselves. It gave me another opportunity to match a face to a name and give me some more information about them. Here's what I learned from my students. Quote, "I get to play at recess with all my friends." "I'm excited to make new friends." "I have a new teacher this year." "I get to perform a musical this year that kids last year didn't get to do." "We get assemblies, field trips, field day." "Looking forward to having my dad come as a watchdog." "Thank goodness." "Being back at school this year, last year I was not in the building." "Getting to read more books, playing new games in PE." The list goes on and on. This by far was honestly my favorite moment of each class during the first week of school because it brought me joy. Last year was tough, and I told you all about that toughness. My hope is that we will take the time to celebrate our students, educators, staff, and families throughout this school year. In a time when we can stand here arguing for what we personally think is best and what we think others should do, I hope that we always put students first. Even just today, in my kindergarten music class, we played two different instruments, the eggshakers and some wrist handbelts, and you would think that I had just given them a huge bowl of ice cream. When they were walking across the crosswalk at dismissal, they were telling their parents, hey, that's my music teacher, and she let me make music today. my music teacher, and she let me make music today." We all need to pause and appreciate these moments as they occur. I've had so much fun in my classroom these past three weeks, and I look forward to a school year full of music. Thank you.
The last school board meeting was opened by a message for the community to genuinely listen, to seek to understand. Uniquely, this very district certified me as a student and a parent to understand that leadership paradigm. For us to seek to understand, we must listen. But for us to listen, we must hear one speak with clarity, open dialogue, and preparation for meaningful discourse. As a parent, we are our students' strongest advocate. Our educators are their strongest ally. Public schools are meant to be spaces where community happens, where people of different backgrounds collaborate and engage in learning. As a board, your role is to transact the business of this district to make this next generation prosperous. But if you cannot relate to the people you serve, how are you seeking to understand? Has your power status surpassed your capability to engage with the people? These people fund these very walls and the education for our students. Stop cutting parents out of the important conversations that affect the mental, physical, and emotional well-being of all families, and find a way for us to work together. When you vote today to cancel the tour of these meetings meant to increase engagement in our community, will you be voting because you believe, as an elected official, you do not have a due diligence to engage with the people in this community? The largest part of any relationship is to build on trust and communication. How are our schools safe for students, staff, and educators every single day, but not for you once a month? We have five high school gyms that could provide adequate, well-ventilated meeting space so this community could attend without limiting public attendance. Is force and manipulation what you pride your decision-making on for this school board? I'll leave you with the quote, "A team is not a group of people who work together. A team is a group of people who trust each other to work together." Start working together as a team by going out to our schools and engaging the public to find solutions that work to bring our community together.
Good evening. I pray that, just like last month, you all have the ears to hear, the eyes to see, and the softened hearts to receive what everyone is saying tonight. I'm a mother of three and Olathe resident of eight years and born and raised in Johnson County. My oldest is in first grade. My middle is in the peer model program here in the district and has a speech IEP. We start every meeting with the pledge of allegiance, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." What happened to that? What happened to the "one nation under God," and when did we become so segregated and split? The United States First Amendment talks about freedom of speech and religion. And what is happening here and the hidden CRT agenda within the DEI program is not freedom of speech nor religion. It seems like racism and socialism. DEI is supposed to stand for diversity, equity, and inclusion, but yet, in reality, I see it as division, exclusion, and isolation. No offense, but we don't really believe anything that you guys are saying anymore because your transparency and integrity or the lack thereof has been a bit faulty in the last year and a half, and I think the trust was completely broke with the school board and the parents. What we teach our kids at home and in the church is all of a sudden going to be drastically different than what is being taught in the schools. And I will not consent nor be sorry for feeling angry and uneasy about the school teaching my kids about all the genders that they're talking about and bringing back and lighting fires to racism, which is where the devil is in the details. How do we get back to talking about education where the schools teach our kids math, science, language arts, and history in its full context and history accuracy and leave the parenting to the actual parents and guardians? We do not and will not co-parent with the government. Now on to the masks and a quick overview. When will it be done with the masks? The last meeting, one of you specifically asked about the benchmarks and when we will remove the mask mandate. The time is now. It's time to get back to our freedoms of choice in the good old U.S.A. and stop the nonsense political agenda that is pushed, being pushed. Unmask our kids and do better.
Good evening. My name is John D. Highfield, taxpayer and resident of Johnson County. I'm here to state my opposition to CRT, DEI, or the derivatives thereof being instructed, indoctrinated, or even hinted at in this school district. This includes propagandizing faculty, students, or the community at large through PowerPoint presentations, posters, textbooks, or any other medium that has the express purpose of spreading neo-Marxist conflict theory enhanced by Gramsci and the Frankfurt School, but still retaining the hegemonic oppressor and oppressed themes of critical theory, critical legal theory, and final, critical race theory of the present day. The CRT/DEI derivatives have the horrific coercive mandates of North Korea or China encouraging the turning in of friends, parents, or even faculty if they do not toe the line or anything dictated as potentially damaging to the dogma of CRT or DEI. You saw the poster. Every piece of this propaganda that will reveal itself in false doctrines of white fragility, white rage, white privilege, and the like is just that: false, infiltrating under the guise of quasi-history and emotional claptrap to further divide our students into oppressor and oppressed camps. You're a willing co-conspirator if you continue to support and fund this neo-Marxist dribble, masquerading under the banners of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and should be ashamed. Stop this before it goes too far. I challenge you to pay advisors to teach the staff in this board the merits of our Constitution or Federalist Papers as spread ideas such as individual responsibility, unalienable rights of man, or that liberty comes with responsibility and not licentiousness, or even what a republic is. No such advisory team exists, but we have no problem having neo-Marxists on the payroll to trot out friendly-sounding tropes that only divide Americans for the ultimate goal of power over the masses. This is not hyperbole, and tyrants generally cannot be debated with, but I stand here today to put a line in the sand, cease any funding departments and activities of CRT/DEI and its derivative. This is notwithstanding our 18-year staff member Eric, who has a great program with bicycles, law enforcement, et cetera, but it is not part of DEI proper. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Rollings. I wish I was here to make a small difference in the decisions the Olathe School Board makes in speaking tonight, but it's become very apparent that public comments fall on deaf ears here, magnified greatly by limiting public commentary going forward. The school board has made it a priority to put personal interests and politics in front of the interests of the students, their welfare, and their education. You will undoubtedly deny this. Bennett took the case to see how he fit. However, anyone who has been remotely paying attention the last year has witnessed your disloyalty through the actions you've taken, your deep association with the NEA, and the words you and your family members have spoken. Last year, you backpedaled on school choice by closing the schools after registration, and once again, you did the same within regards to mask choice. You did have an option to make certain adjustments to the mask mandate and chose to hide behind the county decision instead. Between all of this, in addition to now disguising CRT with DEI indoctrination at our schools, this board has lost complete trust of this community. When this happens, effective leadership stalls and hinders the progress for the entire school community. A full changing of the guard needs to happen. In order for us to move forward with a healthy and productive and effective school board, the school board must be inclusive of the entire community. That's an equitable outcome, is it not? The board has poked this mama bear one too many times, and the entire den has been awakened. Student advocates will not sit by and watch the board systematically dismantle the public education system in Olathe. It's time to get back to the fundamentals of education and prepare these students to be productive citizens of the community. I implore the public to vote on November 2nd and to...
Man, we're not going to talk about politics.
Give the students a final opportunity to be considered in school board decisions.
Good evening. My name is Marcell Walston. I'm a resident of Lenexa for over 20 years, and I have a son from the Northwest. I came tonight because I was interested in the presentation of, from the diversity group, and I do have some concerns. Equity is the buzzword right now. I want to make sure that when you implement this plan, because I know you will implement it, that you realize that equity work goes beyond having philosophical conversations about race in the hopes that that will lead to better outcomes for children. If you really want to get better results for the children in our school that are at risk, you will provide specific actionable strategies to help those students at risk rather than changing teacher, trying to change teachers' minds. Otherwise, all you're going to have is a one-dimensional view of equity. Research how kids learn and what has worked in other districts. That can help tell us what those solutions are for better outcomes here in Olathe rather than just conversations. Concentrate on creating schools that students want to attend that are knowledge-rich with curriculum. Another thing I want to mention, my time is running out, is the hotline. Be careful with that hotline. That is very, that could create very easily a hostile and oppressive environment in schools and create all sorts of issues for non-free speech. And I echo Ms. Filter's request for a defined process and also including consequences. That is just not a good idea, that hotline. Thank
Hello again. My name is Holly Palacio, and I have a specific request from my son, who is unable to be here this evening. Please drop the mask mandate. That is his specific request. It's all he wanted to come and ask. And in alignment with that, if you could, please not pass policy change JGCC under consent item 507. If you're going to pass exchange, pass the change in exclusion protocol to make permanent a mere possible exposure exclusion, just drop the mask mandate now. If that's what you're going to do going forward, and you're going to continue to exclude them for sitting next to someone at lunch or passing in the hallways or on a sports team, then the masks are superfluous now. So if you're going to go ahead and pass that, then at least give them back their mental health and their developmental, their developmental progress. My primary objective in coming tonight was communication, and effective communication. It's a theme you keep hearing from parents. The broken trust between the district and parents is, I hope, repairable. And listening to tonight's presentation on the DEI department, without question, they care immensely, immensely about the outcomes for the students that they are impacting. And I can't disagree with that motive at all. I would reiterate the request that it be tied to measurable outcomes and measurable improvements for those students. If you're going to categorize success based on any level of or definition of diversity, make it measurable. My youngest son, multiple special needs, and I'm running out of time, but at the end of the day, all the social acclamation in the world for him, where he feels included, makes zero difference if
I'm the father of three kids, well, two in the district now. We pulled my son last week. I'm here to speak out on behalf of the parents and families that were essentially locked out of the building and ignored by the board this evening. I'm having a hard time understanding how elected board members elected by the residents of this district can ignore their constituents. What are you doing outside of board meetings to engage stakeholders, parents, and teach your students and hear their concerns? Perhaps you could remember why you ran for your position to start with. I'm sure you have a biased opinion for what you expect for your kids when you took the oath to step into this role. You agreed to advocate for all students across the district to look at all facets of the issue and govern in a way that puts kids first by addressing their needs as well as the needs of the teachers and staff. You're not tasked with being in charge of our children's health. That role solely lies with their parents regarding it. It makes no sense that our children can go anywhere outside of the respective school building with no mask or required to wear them inside of the school building. As anyone asks the experts, not the doctors, most of the people you're talking about who are talking about exposure and medical exposure are medical doctors, and whereas they are experts in their fields, they are not experts in industrial hygiene. They're highly trained, professional, board-certified, and highly credentialed industrial hygienists whose sole responsibility is to assess environmental factors and factors that arise in a concentrated area like the workplace or a school. They evaluate situations to determine if sickness, impaired health, or well-being are significantly discomforted among workers that citizens in the community are of a concern, and make decisions, recommendations based on their findings. They are the experts when it comes to BPE and safety protocols and standards. The Petty Podcast with Stephen Petty would be a good place to learn more about industrial hygienists. Have you watched the kids lately? Who are masked? They have been in situations inside, sorry, I have been in situations inside a list of schools at three times this week, back-to-back at sporting events. The kids are constantly touching their faces, high-fiving friends, scratching their noses, taking their masks down, putting it back up, taking it off, and laying it on the chair of floor, throwing it to friends as they run to a game, and then picking it up and putting it back on. And tell me how this is healthy. It's not.
About the changes recommended for the communicable diseases policy.
I'm going to ask Chris Pittman to step up and talk about that.
Good evening. Hi. It's nice to talk about you. This is my first time here at the podium without having had a chance to talk to you all. The change of JGCC, that matches some guidance we have from KASB, Association of School Boards, related to basically some tightening up the board policies. The specific, there's a couple changes there. I worked with Sharon Morris on that about, sorry, about, do you want to speak to those a bit? There's a couple there that kind of pertain in particular. One, it's children or students, anyone in our buildings is going to have exposure to some type of communicable disease. That kind of clarifies that. And there's also some language regarding health officials in our buildings. Now, we're school nurses. They're able to basically examine children and determine if there's some type of exposure. So I'm going to, I'm going to refer to Sharon a bit because this is the health services area because you and I were talking about
So the primary change, like at the beginning, was to bring it in consistency with, there were two sentences that were not clear. There was one that indicated, referred to isolation and quarantine, and yet, at the, and so for the infectious or contagious diseases. And not everybody understands that that really is two different terms with specific definitions. And so the sentence before that had been, I felt like, a little unclear that we were dealing with two things, and I wanted to make it clear in the policy that we were dealing with both quarantines and isolations and what those terms meant. And so I felt that that clarity, it to bring those two sentences, the second sentence referring to quarantines and isolation has been district's policy for, I think, many, many, many years, way before, I've been here 17 years, and that policy has been in place. And so it was a matter of clarity. We always do that in collaboration with Johnson County Health Department or the local health authority, which reflects our local conditions and what's going on locally, not dictated from above, so we rely on them to assist us in that. So it's not individual, it's not like nurses making a decision in dependence of public health authorities.
So I think what I've heard from several parents that they're concerned about the quarantining of healthy kids who are asymptomatic.
And that helps to cut the... And that helps to cut the transmission beyond because when you have a disease that is contagious two days before symptoms occur, then by the time of even the most conscientious of parents would keep a sick child home. But if they were contagious two days before you already started that, so you're trying to get out ahead of that by those people that were exposed to that two days ahead. If you can send them home for that prescribed incubation period, and that's done with chickenpox and rubella and the other infectious diseases, if you can send them home prior to that developing, you can cut that transmission within the classroom. And that preserves education and ongoing education for all the rest.
I totally get that. I mean, this is the first disease in my lifetime that I remember where you have asymptomatic spread. I think the complaint is water mask for then, you know? So if we're masking and we're still mass quarantining classes, it's an issue. And so I just would encourage yet again to narrow down our quarantines if we're masked in the classroom.
And we look at that very closely. Unfortunately, there are times when we have to take the masks off. And sometimes at lunch, we are mandated now to all be back. So we have more students in our classrooms than we had even last year. And so spacing becomes an issue. So lunchtimes, snack times, those types of activities, the masks come off because we have to eat and drink. And that is where a lot of our exposures are occurring. And we try, we are trying with increasing intensity to really narrow that. We pore over seating charts and where did this happen? And we evaluate it with the health department and we make it as narrow as we possibly can. But even with masking, again, it's not perfect and it, and there are times where the masks just are not feasible to be worn.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. If not, I'd entertain a motion for those seven items.
I would move to approve action items 5.01 through 5.07 as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. McKeon, second by Mr. Whitcliffe.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliffe?
Yes.
All right. And on to action bids, contracts, agreements. I think we might have at least one question on this. Could you, Mr. Gary?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to pull out 6.05, the school resource officers, talk a bit about maybe a little bit of history on that and maybe just kind of our role with the police department and just kind of what we're doing to make sure that's.
Looks like Dr. McMullen's already on his way to the mic there. So Dr. Mack, if you could give us some information, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Mr. Gary, do you mind reframing that question for me?
That's a tough one to do. Really, the main thing I like to see is just kind of how we're, one, I know we're splitting the costs with, say, we're talking about potentially adding a few down the road, just what that would do. And then also just kind of how we're utilizing our SROs in the classes, or classes schools in different ways.
Sure. So we, you know, we're fortunate, we've had a longstanding, positive, effective relationship with the city of Olathe and specifically the police department. Been utilizing the SRO program since the 90s. And at one point in time, we had SROs in all of our secondary schools back in the 2008, 2009 era. There was some reductions at the city level due to some staffing issues. And so we were sharing SROs at the middle school level, which we really found to not be that effective because one of the biggest pieces of a successful SRO program is the relationships and the proactive work they do with our students. So Chief Mankey and Dr. Barry, when he was our superintendent, was certainly a goal of theirs to get our staffing slowly over time because it is an expensive program, to get back up to that one-to-one level. So we have continued to chip away at that over the last seven years. We're currently at 14 SROs and we have shared SROs in just three buildings. And so that's why the contract is laid out. Hopefully, if both parties agree, to be able to add three more in the future to get to that one-to-one staffing ratio. So the SROs do lots of work within the building, not only on the proactive safety side, the relationship building with kids, but also working classrooms, everything from answering questions about their careers and the line of police work to presentations on vaping, on other substance abuse issues, et cetera. You'll see our SROs in fax classrooms, in PE classrooms, in the lunchrooms, out front, out back, they're everywhere. And they're definitely invested in their communities and well-known within their communities.
Great. I was going to see if maybe down the road, at some point, maybe Chief Batares may could even come in and kind of help with some of that too. Like just kind of show us maybe a little more in-depth presentation on the SROs and some of the things they're doing. Because I know my kids have had great relationships with some of them, but I'd love to see what's going on going forward.
I think Dr. McMullen and Chief Bata could probably work together to at least put something together. You know, one of the things that I'm really proud of too is just the ways that we work together with our SROs and the police department that really keeps our students out of the juvenile justice system in many ways. And I think that's pretty important to highlight. So that would also be a great opportunity to do that.
I'd like to hear about any collaboration that's happening with our SEL initiatives and how that dovetails in with the SRO presence as sort of a diversionary tactic, make sure that we understand that sometimes something that might invoke calling an SRO is actually an SEL-related issue and how those two teams are working well together in buildings.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up because that certainly is something that the district and the police department really started focusing on back in 2016. Senate Bill 367 was brought forth through the Kansas Legislature. It was really a juvenile justice reform bill. And a lot of it centered around, you know, sentencing guidelines for juvenile offenses and juvenile code adjustments. But there was a big piece in there requiring an MOU between school districts and their local law enforcement that really talked about really establishing clear guidelines for what activity is referred to an SRO and what is not. And certainly, this was all driven, you know, by the pipeline to prison initiative, really the impact of getting juveniles in the juvenile system at an early age, the impact that has on them. And so there's all kinds of things we've done in collaboration with the police department to not utilize police unless it's, you know, ultimately has to be. And so, yeah, we'd love to come back and present on that.
That'd be great. Love to hear it.
One other piece, I'll put a plug in for the police department. They started their co-responder program, I think it was about two years ago. And it pairs a licensed therapist with a police officer. They have them on the shift, every shift of the day. And they've been extremely successful in dealing with what used to be a regular patrolman responding to a mental health issue. And now we have a co-responder there and it's been extremely effective. But we can include that in the information as well.
Love to see it. Thank you.
That'd be great. I love that our police department has done the crisis intervention training. So it de-escalates things. I mean, to me, it keeps us from doing horrible things or outcomes being horrible and keeps us out of the muzz. It keeps our community functioning well. So I'm very grateful for the SROs in our schools. And it's the collaboration with the kids and families, to me, that is where the rubber meets the road. It's real relationship. And then that, on the next item for the agenda, 6.06 is the police resource instructor. Love to see that as well. Is that at Olathe West will it be?
Yes, so that's currently in place. That's just a renewal of the contract. So that is the Olathe police officer that is one of the two instructors from the city in our public safety program.
And they part, the city partners, they pay 25% of that salary and then on the school resource officers, they pay 50%.
That's correct.
So it's a big skin in the game partnership.
It's a big investment on both sides, but we think it's a very, very effective partnership.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad we brought this up. I was going to do it if you didn't, Mr. Gary, because I just think over the years, this has just been such a great partnership and just an example of how a city and a school district can work together for the betterment of kids. So, thank you.
Any other questions on 6.01 to 6.06?
I'd move to approve action bids, contracts, and agreements, 6.01 through 6.06.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Perry, second by Ms. Schultz.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
All right. And on to action other. Got a student trip, the budget publication, and the notice of hearing. Any questions on those? If not, I'd entertain a motion for all three.
Move to approve items 7.01 through 7.03 as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Whitcliffe, second by Mr. McKeon.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
All right. And we have our future action items up there and then our information, some updated appointments and designations. And we are on to topics of discussion. Does anyone on the board have any topics that they'd like to discuss at this time?
I have a couple.
Okay, go ahead.
First, I didn't see the Head Start report. Am I just missing it?
No, I didn't, I didn't receive it.
Okay, okay. We'll look forward to that. Dr. Jaeger, we had a few phone calls about school lunches. Do you want to talk a little bit about that so families will know kind of what's going on?
Yeah, I would be happy to. And then, Dr. McMullen, you're welcome to pop up if there's anything you'd like me to add. Dr. McMullen has really worked closely with that. But, you know, as you look around our nation, if you do a Google search and essentially look at, search school districts and food service all in the same line, you're going to find challenges all over our nation with school districts in terms of supporting the amount of food that's needed. And, you know, certainly with the USDA approving free breakfast and lunch for all students in the United States, it's a good thing for kids, but there's also some challenges that are coming along with that in our nation. And we are not immune to those challenges in Olathe. You know, one of the things that is a very real reality for us right now is, like our district, you know, our food suppliers are struggling to get employees to drive forklifts, to drive trucks. And that's not just here locally, that's also the people that produce the food at the chicken plant and what have you. So the labor market has really challenged us in terms of getting food. We are considerably in better shape within many other school districts. There are school districts in the state who have been dropped by their suppliers completely that have left them scrambling for food each and every day. In Olathe, I will tell you that we very much wish that we could offer, you know, a plethora of à la carte options at our schools, especially for our middle school and high school kids. The reality is the supplies are not there for us to do that. Right now, we are receiving just about anything that we can get our hands on from our suppliers. You know, we've leaned on our long-term relationships with the suppliers that we have in place. But, you know, if a truck with 400,000 chicken tenders shows up, we're going to take those chicken tenders because there are districts that are not able to procure food right now to serve their students. And, you know, a lot of that goes back to the labor market that is just connected to about every industry in our nation right now. We've heard from families who are concerned about students not getting food, you know, being out of food at the end of the day, where the kids that go to lunch last, those kinds of things. I will tell you, Dr. McMullen has followed up on every one of those situations that we've heard of. Our expectation is that our kids in our district are fed. So we are concerned if that is a result of what's happening. Like I said, the choice that we once had and the ability to do those kinds of things is severely limited right now. I will tell you, just to brag on John Hutchison and Jim just a little bit, that I could probably use the word aggressive with some of our, some of our suppliers to make sure that we have food here to give our kids. And, you know, we talked a little bit earlier in our meeting about federal mandates and those kinds of things, but those also exist for food. And so we've had, you know, a lot of folks who love to support our schools or in our community that said, we're happy to make lunches and bring them to kids, or we have a catering business, we would love to be able to bring in lots of, lots of food and those kinds of things. The regulations that we still have are still in place. And so we also, in order to receive the funding for the free lunches and breakfasts that we're providing, we still have to meet the dietary guidelines set forth upon school districts and that kind of thing. So it's a significant challenge. We're going to continue to work really hard to make sure no kiddo doesn't get fed while they're at school. To be honest with you, some of it's also working through some of the challenges that are happening within our system. We have very smart kids, many of them have figured out that I can go through the line once with a hoodie on, and then I would take my hoodie off and I'm going to go through the line again. So not that most of our students would do that, but that kind of thing is happening too. And so our school is trying to also be, schools trying to be responsive to those kinds of things to make sure that all kids eat. But I don't know, Jim, if I did a very good job of kind of explaining our reality, but feel free to share anything else.
I think I could have stayed seated. I thought you'd recap that very well. You know, frankly, most of the concerns we've heard are at the high school level. And again, as Dr. Jaeger talked about, that last lunch period, frankly, that's been a ebb and flow since the beginning of time, well before COVID, in terms of trying to predict how many kids are going to eat, which of the four entrees that we're offering. And then suddenly, instead of four entrees being available, there's just two or one. And that may not be the choice of that student that's in the last lunch period or what have you. So again, we're still, food services is working diligently to figure out the trends and the likes and the dislikes of our students and again, balance that with product availability, et cetera. But we've got some other strategies we're looking at to ensure that those kids have multiple options, even if they're that last lunch period at the high school level.
And I would say too, you know, I talked about Jim and John Hutchison as well, but Scott Kingery and his team in food service have been working around the clock, literally leaning on every vendor we can get a hold of to, you know, try to get as much as we can in place. The other thing that's reality for us, and we're lucky with this, many school districts don't have a central kitchen like we do in Olathe. We do have some ability to freeze large amounts of food and stockpile large amounts of food. And that has been helpful to us in some degree as well. I mean, before school started, I think we had about two weeks worth of food on hand, which is really credit to Scott and his team recognizing where we were headed in terms of the supply chain and that kind of piece. But it's a challenge, to say the least.
Thank you very much. Can you do an update on busing? Are we fully staffed on buses?
Jim's not going to get to. We're talking about all Dr. McMullen's areas tonight.
Oh, goodness.
Go ahead, Dr. McMullen.
Kind of miss my old job. Now, our transportation provider, DS Bus Lines, frankly, has done a very good job. We transitioned to them at the beginning of the pandemic. So certainly a tough time to make one of your largest transitions in the district in terms of your outside vendors and partners. The challenge that we've run into this year, obviously, the labor market, like we see in so many of our other support industries, is just not there. DS has been extremely aggressive and proactive in their hiring. They certainly lost some of their more seasoned drivers here even recently with the spike with the Delta variant and had some folks, especially some of our older population that were driving, take a step back for a while. And so really, the challenge for us has been, you know, what can we do to make sure we get every kid to school that has signed up for transportation? We had a July 25 deadline to register to be able to make sure you are routed for a bus on day one. We had 4,500 registrations turned in by then. From July 31st to August 19th, we had 2,500 additional registrations. And to put that in perspective, DS has two routers. And to route a student when you get a registration, each kid, it takes about 10 to 15 minutes to route a kid, to get them on the right route, bus, stop, time, et cetera. And so they are just, have been playing catch-up ever since school started. We've tried to communicate with our families on that. They are doing a large reroute this weekend. We'll be sending out a communication tomorrow to all of our transportation families that will hope to balance some routes as best we can. It will alter some route pickup times and drop-off times. We'll communicate those with the families. Those will take effect next Wednesday. So spoiler alert on the email tomorrow for our transportation families, but we are going to do some rerouting with all these additional kiddos to make sure we get everybody on a bus if we possibly can. There will be some that will continue to be. There will be some that will continue to be on a waitlist just because we essentially don't have enough drivers to. There are routes that we would have maybe run three buses in the past where we have one, and it's just the reality of numbers and staff.
Thank you. As long as we're communicating, like if buses are running late, or this week we had some issue with that, and they're hot on the bus for long periods of time, just communicate, communicate, communicate. I think everybody knows, you know, it's a challenge right now.
Yeah.
Thank you for your hard work.
Sure. Thanks, Jim.
I think I heard that, isn't Dr. Vadel at Casey Mill? He's driving a bus or something around?
Yeah.
You got a big van, Dr. Jaeger? Well, Mr. Gary, I believe in Mr. Pittman could probably help with this. I heard recently there's a state statute that allows the superintendent to drive a bus if it's mandated, if it's needed. What I will tell you is I'm not sure you want the liability of the superintendent driving a bus.
We just want the video.
Yes.
Any other comments? If not, turn it over to the superintendent.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to make some comments tonight. Last month, I didn't make comments just because of our time, but I wanted to take a little bit of time tonight to just recognize the work that some of our support groups did over the summer. One of the things that is easy for us, as we think about just neighborhood schools and, you know, a building like this that lots of us work in, just the scope and size of our district and what that really entails. So I wanted to share some things about that tonight. I'm going to start with our Facilities and Operations Department, led by Travis Pelangi. Travis, give everybody a wave just in case. This summer, and these numbers are pretty staggering, so this summer, our Facilities and Operations staff cleaned and maintained over 6 million square feet of district buildings, landscaped and maintained over 1,400 acres of district property, replaced over 160,000 square feet of carpet, installed over 80,000 square feet of seamless resinous flooring, replaced over 150,000 square feet of roofing, painted over 200,000 square feet of walls, installed over 225,000 square feet of asphalt pavement, completed over 14,000 work orders throughout the previous school year and the summer break. Those are all just individual one-off things that need to be done, 14,000 of them. Completed rooftop unit replacements, HVAC control upgrades, ductwork replacement, and chiller pump upgrades throughout the district. It's, you know, that's easy for me to read that list, but you think about the time and effort and coordination to get all that done in a district our size. So I want to thank our staff at the Service Center Facilities and Operations for that. Food service, as we talked about, there are some challenges with food services, but there is also some tremendous celebrations. This summer, our Food Services team served over 18,550 breakfasts, 18,335 lunches at Northview, Ridgeview, Santa Fe Trail, Westview, and the 34 days of meal service. So over 36,000 meals in 34 days, pretty impressive. Preventative maintenance and repairs were completed on all kitchen equipment and all school cafes. So that's about 55 school cafes that had work done. Assisted DCF by processing for them 3,900 students to receive pandemic EBT payments for the 2020-2021 school year. Also, in April of May this past year, they served 95,000, say that one more time, 95,000 meals a week. Our numbers this year, I think, are ticking pretty close to that. In the past, we typically would have served about 60,000 meals a week. Do I have that right? Okay, a little bit lower than 60,000. So pushing 100,000 meals a week out of our tremendous food services operations. So again, I'd like to thank them for their tireless work and what they're doing. Technology, Matt is with us tonight. There's Matt. His team also worked really hard in the summer. This summer, technology rolled out, and, let's see, I didn't read that right. This summer, technology rolled out two major tech e-learning courses for staff, Apple Classroom, and substitute synergy training. In the past year, tech has collected and redistributed approximately 18,000 iPads, 8,000 Surface Go's, 3,000 Surface Pros to staff and students. And it was exceptionally challenged, laughing now. This was exceptionally challenging, given the shortage of devices and shipping delays or small catastrophes in Wichita with trucks, devices. Matt, how many staff members do you have in technology?
69.
69 staff members moving that many thousands of devices to make sure our students and staff are ready to go. Technology has also replaced all high school desktops, with only, with the only exceptions being some specialty labs. Additionally, they replaced all the teacher machines in the middle schools with Surface Pro docking stations and re-imaged every other desktop. Re-imaged or replaced every desktop, also in the elementary schools. How many desktops do we own as a district, Matt? You didn't know I was going to quiz you tonight?
22,000.
22,000 desktops in the district that got touched over the summer. Last year, Student Information Team was tasked with reworking technology to accommodate both students and teachers' learning in a remote environment. This summer, that entire system had to be redesigned for the return to in-person learning. This involved reworking teacher gradebooks and scheduling for over 27,000 students and updating over 2,800 teacher accounts. Technology upgraded security video equipment at 57 locations. So again, Matt, thanks to you and your team for your hard work this summer. I'd also like to just share a couple of other things happening right now. Our Human Resources Team had a classified staff hiring fair on August 25. Dr. Sigg and her team, I think we had about 91 potential applicants come and visit with us at the recruiting fair, so we were excited about that. We're also happy to report that many of those applicants have signed on the dotted line to come to work for us in Olathe. I would just like to say that that's one of the things that is going to take a lot of thought and attention for us in this labor market, is what are the kinds of unique things that we can do to attract people to Olathe? And we'll be excited to share some other announcements in the next couple of weeks of things we're working on as well to try to recruit and also retain the quality classified staff that we have in Olathe. In closing, a couple of other things I'd like to mention. I've been in probably about 25 schools since school started. I will tell you that when people ask me what's the best thing, the best thing right now is that we have kids in school learning. We have staff in school working with kids. Someone indicated tonight, you know, the opportunity for kids to go on field trips, for parents to be in and see our classrooms. And there are so many positive things happening as you walk around our schools. And I just want to thank our team and our staff and our community for getting us to that point. As of today, we have 29,600 students enrolled in the Olathe Public School District, which at this point is about 1,000 more than we had last year. So we're really pleased that we're welcoming many of our students and families back to the district or welcoming them to the district for the first time. I think it's also worth noting, last year, we weren't even in school until September 8. So we're way ahead of schedule in terms of being back in school and having students interacting in positive ways and having those experiences. And then the last thing I'll share tonight, which many people have probably seen, we were just recently named as one of the top five places to work by Forbes. That was something we shared out on social media, and that's, I think, a tremendous testament to the environment and the community that we have here in the Olathe Public School District. So I'd be remiss if I didn't share that tonight as well as a celebration. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Since my understanding, we need about 10 minutes?
Yep, about 10 minutes.
For executive session? Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I move that the Board adjourned executive session for the purpose of discussing employer employee negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer employee negotiations under coma, and that the Board returned to their regular meeting at 8:49.
Very specific.
Second.
Second by Mr. Perry McKeon.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.